Good evening. This is a meeting of the Dutton Board of Education being held on Monday, November seventeenth at the central office. It's being held on there on Zoom and in person. In attendance today, we have in person there the McWhitney, Jen White, myself at Washington, and Adrian Johnson. And online, we have Jay, and Ian, and Dr. A is online. And also in attendance, we have Chris Dopine. We have Stephanie Walker.
Sawyer.
Sawyer. Sawyer. I can't remember that because I asked you.
Mine was Sawyer's.
Yeah. Yeah. We have Shannon. We have Ryan.
Ryan.
Ryan. Okay, Denise.
Karen Hyatt. She's one of our supervisors, the specialist.
Welcome to the board meeting tonight. The first thing on the agenda is review of the November tenth twenty twenty five minutes. That's attachment number one. Any corrections to those minutes? Jen?
No correction, just more like making it specific so that, let's say that when they're preparing the budget. So I wanted to follow up on the social worker, but we asked for Northeast Academy. They asked for one and they only got half last year to be shared with Charles Barnum. And then also the speech pathologist who, and Charles Barnum, whose workload or prior might have been more so. So I would like to just make sure that any investments, if superintendent can work with the principals to make sure that you get what you need. I know that was from last year. Maybe half was good, but I know you asked for one and you didn't get it. So and then, and they got major contracts for upcoming year. So that's it. Thank you.
And speech pathologist goes with Stephanie.
Yes.
And Charles Barnum.
Yes, we have full time on the points.
Yes. It's like the workload from my understanding of the person. So it's just that to make sure that we don't lose another person.
Absolutely. I appreciate that.
And I think it was more involved than that. There were, it was a different kind of job, different kind of hours. So it worked better for her family.
Mm hmm.
Okay. Any other corrections? Okay. All those in favor of approving the review of the whole minutes on November tenth, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Aye.
Are you opposed? Who's that?
Kind of us here.
Who? Okay, let me do this. Ian, do you approve the minutes on, for November tenth?
I'm gonna stay. I didn't have a chance to really dive deep into them. Yeah, I was gonna stay on that.
Okay. Jay?
Aye.
Andrea?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. So ensuring it's absolutely can't do the math that best. Well, it's approved. On the next item is, oh, data review, a favorite, favorite, favorite time of the year. And N E L O. Do we go in order that is written, or does anyone want to volunteer the vote first?
Well, I think with the slideshow, they're kind of prepared to go in order, alphabet, alpha order.
Yeah. CD first.
Alpha.
Initials.
Oh, Stephanie, you have to go first.
That's nice. I don't know if that's good or bad.
See what they do.
Thank you. He told her though, she goes first and she can hang it back and forth.
That was good advice, Denise.
All right. So I'll just kick it off. So thank you for having me. Those first two slides just orient us back to our strategic plan. So we're always like revisiting that and seeing that these are their pillars and our goals, our key performance indicators, which attach specifically to our data.
Now, so right now, our school enrollment is around three sixteen. It does change often with the transitivity of the military population. So three sixteen is where we're currently at. Any special programming? We do have the fourth and fifth grade academy in our building. The student makeup at this point in time is the thirty six percent free and reduced lunch, the twenty two percent special education students, and about two percent of the multilingual learners are limited English proficiency. Some of our trends with chronic absenteeism, there has been an increase from two thousand twenty three. And, but we are definitely targeting that this year. And I can talk about that a little later in the slide to kind of talk about where we are now. I'm proud of some of the numbers we're starting to see early in the year. Our theme has to do with discovery and really students being able to discover their passions with the creativity, curiosity, and exploration. We have discovery block that's built into our weekly schedule. We also have discovery enrichment that's built into our weekly schedule as well. After every discovery cluster, we have about three of them every year. There is a discovery expo so that families can come into our building and see what the students have been working on in their discovery block and be able to present to their parents and to the public what they have created. And we have currently a partnership with Denison Nature Center, but we're always looking to increase that partnership.
And that academy, how many students do you have?
Currently, right now, I want to say seven. We just received another student, so eight is that?
I think it's eight. Yeah.
Okay. In each grade, in a four, the fifth, or eight altogether?
Eight altogether. Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right. So moving on to the next slide, we have, I'm gonna look at the ELA proficiency levels first. We see that third grade did take a decrease going from two thousand twenty four to two thousand twenty five, a seventeen percent decrease. Fourth grade, a nine percent decrease. Then fifth grade, a slight increase from fifty to fifty two percent between those years. Cohort wise, we went from third graders to the fourth graders. They stayed about the same in proficiency levels. And then from fourth graders to fifth graders, that cohort did see a decrease there. When I dove in a little more into that, there were some areas of focus that kind of were brought to my attention around the different ASPA targets. Target, I don't know if I go into all of that. Do I get into all of that? I'm just gonna do it. All right. So we found that students were falling down a little bit with target one, which is just given an inference or conclusion, being able to support them with details, especially the implicit information. So like the reading between the lines. Target two, kind of looking at the essential message or lesson of a story. And then target three and seven, which has to do with vocabulary. So that's just some digging in there. If we're switching over to math, we have seen a decrease in third grade, pretty significant decrease from about twenty two percent over the years to twenty, twenty four to twenty five. Fourth grade, a slight decrease of three percent. And fifth grade, a decrease of eight percent. Cohort saw a decrease there too. Third to fourth graders decreased by sixteen percent. And then fourth to fifth graders decreased by eleven percent. And then some targets there were our fifth grade, fifth graders, some operations around decimals, and plating of ordinate points.
Oh, really? That was my favorite.
Little battleship.
Yeah. Moving on to the next slide, this is just representing the students that are right at the cost there within the range. We have a lot more students that are falling at the lower end of that range. However, we're starting to look at that using early DIBELS data to really target students in that particular cohort. And then using some of that target information and data that I just talked about to pinpoint specifically the needs of the individual students, but also the historic trends that we see with targets being a weakness, certain targets being certain weaknesses within the grades.
And this was something the board had asked, like, where are they in the range? Are they, are they more on the lower end or the higher end? So really monitoring who's really close.
Yeah.
To getting to the next, yeah. And how do we make sure everybody's growing?
Yep. We, I mean, I'm gonna say that science is, these numbers are a strength in our building with fifth grade. I'm happy to see an increase from twenty four to twenty five. And it's kind of been around that sixty percent mark for a few years now. You can always obviously increase that, but I found that was a strength for our, our data. Moving on to the action steps focus. So this was obviously the before I came into the, the building. These were the action steps that were chosen. They wanted to focus on the wit and wisdom to fidelity. They wanted to focus on using I E Bs as a teaching tool, focus on math fluency, focusing really on the S E L trusted adult, making sure that everybody in the building can identify a trusted adult, using DESA as a screener for our tier two and tier three S E L interventions, strengthening partnerships with the magnet theme, and then using mystery science to help us with our N G S S scores. The outcome, again, is in front of you. We kind of went over it in the slides previous. The academic growth of all students was at forty seven percent. Our high needs were right around the same at forty seven percent. Our math academic growth, about sixty percent all, sixty seven percent high needs. So that was kind of positive to see our high needs moving in that direction. Science, all seventy percent, that's not growth because we can't decide because they didn't take it in fourth grade, but about seventy percent all, sixty three percent are high need students. And then trusted adult, seventy five percent of our students could pick out a trusted adult. And then it also included DIBELS, that we saw some movement from the beginning of the year to the end of the year in some of the ranges. But that red area, not seeing a decrease in that was something that really stood out for me. So what are we gonna do about it? So one of the first action steps is talking a little bit about using the consistent implementation of the district approved programs. What I want to focus on that is implementation doesn't mean we don't customize it. So even though we have the programs in front of us, that we're not teaching all the time exactly what it says, but using our practitioners and using their, their professionals to make those professional decisions about what's best for the students sitting in front of them. And so if reading the script doesn't make sense, how are we gonna customize it for the kids in front of them? And so that's kind of conversations we're having at this point in time. The second one, so providing that student centered instruction based on just some initial observations. I'm seeing that we really do need to build some of the learning stamina in our students. Really, we need to create the productive struggle opportunities for our students. And then increasing the teacher efficacy through deliberate planning, modeling, and reflection. Moving on to the assessment data, the row there, design data driven win blocks, incorporate I E Bs to strengthen our unit alignment, analyze the eye ready and DIBELS trends to adjust instruction. So being really, really thoughtful and planful about those intervention blocks, making sure that the teachers are still meeting weekly with their content specialists to focus on data, current data, and not just looking at the data, but what are you doing with that data? What is your action step now? The real true impact on the teacher practice. And then following through, making sure there's structures in place that once they leave that conversation with the, the coaches, that there is a plan and they're gonna meet again with what they did with that plan. And that kind of lends itself a little bit more to the last row there. We're gonna continue our CST times, continue the grade level meetings with coaches, ensuring our intervention cycles are six to eight weeks, and being really thoughtful about our eye ready weekly minutes and our lesson completion with that new resource. Moving on to the climate, we saw a steady increase in that trusted adult. That is something that we're doing again. We're focusing on, we're trying to actually create two opportunities in this year where each trusted adult will get the list of the students that trust them and be able to have face to face opportunities twice a year there. We saw an increase in the parents' feedback about that there are opportunities for parent caregiver involvement from a ninety one percent to ninety five. I would love to get back to that ninety nine percent from two thousand twenty three, two thousand twenty two, twenty three. We are making sure that we have family connection opportunities once a month after school. We have our literacy night tomorrow night. And then I am continuing to support teachers in creating windows into their classrooms, and not just physical windows, but like the parent's prayer messages. And so that it's not just a reminder about homework, a reminder about we have a test coming, but truly looking at the fun and engaging lessons that are happening within the classrooms. So I'm just gonna call it window into the classroom. And then lastly, we saw a dramatic drop from staff members feeling that they can participate in P Ds that are related to their position. I feel like we have some control over it, but sometimes not control over it, over it. Specifically, when it comes to paraprofessionals, I am being very strategic about the professional development they're given. We have about fifty percent of our paraprofessionals are new to the building and just new to the position. So we have been working with them on T L I days to plan professional development, really target it to their, their roles, specifically with students with significant behaviors, how best to accommodate and modify work in the classroom.
On this one, did they give any suggestions?
I, I am not sure. I have to get back to that one. That's a good question, though. And then lastly, some of the school action steps for this. We're gonna continue our community meetings, which we have the life is good model with the superpowers, which was new to me when I entered that building. But seeing these community meetings in action, it's just such a phenomenal way to build community in the, in our building. We have some spirit events, like tomorrow, we have an underground spirit day, so they have to show up with anything but a cup. So they can drink their coffee in anything but a cup. So we're gonna see how that goes tomorrow. It'd be a mess. I should probably talk to the custodian. And then just check in. So I am gonna set out, I'm gonna call it a pulse survey, just to get a pulse. I've now been in this role since July, coming up to the first trimester, finishing up, just some feedback to me on if they feel heard, if they feel supported. Keep it anonymous, just to make them feel comfortable in that regard. You were gonna talk, I think. I have, yeah, the DESA data, I'll talk about that on the fourth row. Ensure that the students have at least one trusted adult. I talked about that a little bit. Just making sure that the trusted adult survey, which is happening this week, we're gonna determine the next steps based on that. And then another great thing we do in our building is morning meetings. So no matter what classroom you go into in the morning, teachers are circled up with students. And they're not necessarily just talking about what's happening in the day, but talking about, you know, things that are going on in the outside world, things that are low level, just funny things to talk about, but also maybe deeper conversations. So they're building connections with each other and with the teacher. We have increased, increased our social media presence. We went from no social media to social media. So great increase. We set a goal of a hundred percent of parent teacher conference attendance. We were at ninety five percent last time I delivered that. And that did not include some of the phone conversations that have happened since then. So I would say we are definitely closer to that hundred percent. And I set that expectation with the teachers that if, if a parent does not reach out to you, that you are reaching out to them multiple times to create, to get into the building. I am still working with teachers about sending out those weekly parent's prayer messages. Again, not just you didn't do your, your homework, but making those connections with the classroom. Going to the fourth row, we, DESA was something we used as an S E L screener. It is not, we don't have it anymore. So we'd actually created, I'm sorry, the S E L team created an S E L screener, aligned to the DESA, but also included levels of anxiety. So we're seeing when some of our students' anxiety a little bit more in the classroom. So we want to make sure we're targeting that as well. From there, our S E L tutors will be then planning tier two, tier three interventions based on that. And we're gonna continue the restorative circles and repairing the harm strategies. The fifth row, we would like to increase our student leadership opportunities throughout daily school activities. I am incorporating students into the morning announcements. So they are the ones running morning announcements every morning. We have our anchored for life leaders, which we have seven right now that welcome new students into our, into our community, as well as students that may be experiencing a family member being deployed. How best we're supporting them so they know that they can go to peers in the building to have those conversations? We have our community meetings and our assembly hosts. So students take a very active role in those community meetings. I'm supporting teachers by really listening to their growth goals and then encouraging staff participation on district committees, and then trying to get more feedback from paraprofessionals on how they feel professional development is going. And then lastly, we have our monthly attendance incentives to increase student and staff engagement. We hit some pretty good numbers with that. So I would say forty five days last year, we were at sixteen percent chronic absent. We're at ten point one right now. So we went down about six percent. As of today, we have ten point one. So this, we're fifty four days into the school year. We have ten percent of our students chronically absent. Kristi Post, the assistant principal, and I have met with every family that is chronically absent at this point during parent teacher conferences and had a one on one meeting with them to talk about the importance of attendance and how best we can support them going forward. Once we hit day sixty, we're gonna have nine more students fall off that chronic absentee list. September, we had ninety five point seven eight percent attendance in our building. And actually, we had ninety five point four percent attendance. This is celebrated often. We incorporate into our community meetings. So everybody in our building knows that we have a goal of hitting ninety five percent attendance every day. And that's it. Am I all done? I'll see you later. No. No questions? But then we get to grow.
Hi.
Good job. I did have a question. I don't want to interrupt. Well, we saw a dip on like with the grade. There's no page numbers in this part.
Okay.
Do you, do you know if, like when they were in second grade, but those are kids, or like, they're like new kids, because I know your school has like high turnover. So you may not have had the opportunity to like, you know, educate them like the year before, before they started taking that. So I'm not really sure if that's like a fair assessment of that third grade or?
I would say it is. And that's kind of the feedback. And I would, I should have pulled the numbers for you on that to actually prove what I'm saying. But that's definitely some of the conversations we had with teachers was not having the students from kindergarten to fifth grade in our building, and to really be able to track their progress throughout. So I wouldn't say it's a fair assessment of all the students, but definitely some of them. We also get some students in April. So it's like, I'm sure in all buildings, but, you know, and so right before, they usually arrive, I think the day before S back happens. So, so I think it's a good question.
Yeah, just because it's a, it's a big dip, right? So that's why I sort of, those are some kids.
So we call it cohorting, but it's not necessarily an absolute cohort. It could, you know, be grade to grade, but doesn't mean that's the same hundred percent of the kids that were in third are now in fourth, not in this town at all. And especially at Charles Barnum, I can remember it being said that typically there are like one or two fifth graders that started kindergarten in that school or preschool when we had preschool. So.
Yeah. That's a good question.
Yeah, it is a good question.
Well, thank you for that. And the chronic absenteeism, that's substantial, substantial reduction. It was great for our kids.
Yeah, we just have to keep it.
Have to keep it together.
Yeah, yeah. We're partway in, but it's, it's a good start. So that's great. So I, going back to, we don't have page numbers, but on academic achievement. So do you feel that, this is gonna be a hard question, but your action steps are enough to get our kids up to our children, students up to the levels the state really wants us to be at, which I know now isn't just a percentage of kids hitting, hitting, you know, at or above. But now it's a little bit more complicated than that. But we still have, I think we've got a lot of students that are below that, that benchmark. So do you think that these action, action steps like are sufficient to make? So do you think that these action steps, like, are sufficient to make, you know, progress in the next two or three years?
So, that's a great question. I've thought a lot about being able to explain that being new to a building, right? And I'm building these relationships with teachers. And we've had some really, I wanna say candid and tough conversations around the data, but I need to make sure that I'm continuing to build the trust with the teachers, so that we can have these really personal conversations about instruction. I don't know if that's answering your question, if the action steps are enough. I'm hoping to see growth by the end of the year. I don't think that we're gonna be able to, at this point in time, to have everybody at proficient by the end of the year at levels threes and fours. I'm hoping to see significant growth, though. Do you think specifically, is there something in my action steps that are not enough?
Well, I'm wondering, and no, I think your action steps are great, quite honestly, given, like, the constraints that we have. But I'm wondering if you have, do you feel like you have enough support staff? So outside the, outside the, you know, classroom teaching?
We can be. I was like, I feel that we have a pretty large percentage of special education students this year, specifically in fourth grade, and that, at this point in time, getting that fourth special education teacher position with a seed grant is gonna make definitely a dent in helping to reduce some of these caseloads for our case managers, for sure. I don't know what else besides support.
So specifically, if we were to go, like, ELA, how many, how many support teachers do you have for ELA?
So we have three at this point. Like, you're talking about, like, the, like...
To provide tier-two and tier-three intervention, or, so three, three in the whole school?
Yep. And one of them is coaching, so it's kind of like a dual position. So she is not always face-to-face with students, but she's also trying to coach teachers, too.
Yeah. All right, so I guess I'm going, you know, we have, I guess, around 150 students that are below, you know, in your, in your school, that are below, you know, below target. And so is that enough? And then we can talk about that math, too.
Yeah, I think, as always, having extra resources and teachers that are very skilled in reading intervention and skilled in math intervention, I suppose, that would be welcome in a building. I don't know if I'm allowed to ask for things like that, but yes, that would, it would help.
Whether, if you were to help us talk about it in a couple of months?
I think it would help with reducing...
But you are absolutely, he'll have to tell us what you need.
And you have tutors, but are the SCL, do you have any ELA?
We have two SCL tutors, and we have two math tutors. And so the math tutors are not certified staff, even though they're doing a phenomenal job. They're, you know, not certified staff. But with our reading interventionists, those are our certified teachers, and there's three of them.
And you have a certified math interventionist who probably oversees...
Yeah, the math specialist, and she oversees the two tutors. Yes, I think that having additional resources absolutely would benefit the students, but I think a really strong look at our tier-one instruction needs to happen as well.
All right, yeah, I appreciate that.
And class size, sometimes that really shifts, too, at Charles Barnum.
Yeah.
You tried to start it out okay, but you never know with the ins and outs of people and submarines coming.
Yeah, and we're definitely finding a lot more with the submarines coming in. A lot of our families with high-need students are staying, and so we have a significant, a population that continues to grow with our high-need students. So I appreciate the seed grant position, but I would love for that to be a position that can stay within our building. This SLP position, I know it's 1.6 right now, but that caseload is also significant, too.
Yeah.
So if you're asking for what I want, so, and, okay.
All right. A couple of other things. So we used to get, that we're missing is the students that are not in the, we have the approaching benchmark, at benchmark or well-above benchmark, but I think there's a category of students that are not approaching, is, I believe is what we used to call that category.
So below the approaching? Yeah.
Yeah. How big are those categories? Do you know that without...
I don't know that off the top of my head. I'm sure mathematically I can figure it out right now, but no, I'm not sure exactly where, where we are with that.
All right. So, yeah, it's just those kids. And I guess if we were to look at the dibbles, I'm guessing that they're gonna fall into that, what is it, 28%?
Yeah.
I think you, I think that's graphed out, though. I think you have that charted in red. You have the red, yellow, green.
Yeah, so that was from last school year, at the end of the year. We're falling, I would say, around the same at this point in the year, the beginning of the year data. But progress monitoring is coming up, actually, pretty soon, so I'll be able to speak to see if there's growth already.
And I see Lauren Cassini on here, and she always listens carefully to the questions you have, 'cause she wants to make sure we can get to those charts and graphs. So really looking at the, you know, the different areas, the four different areas, there could be a slide that could show that to you a little better.
Yeah, maybe, you know, at this point, through most of the elementary, so, but maybe if Lauren can send that to the board, 'cause I think that was in previous years. And, you know, I realize that this is a new year, new school for you, so I appreciate all that you're doing. One other thing, so the dibbles and then the iReady tests, are those going out to all parents?
They did, yep. So we have the iReady diagnostic, that's three times a year. Parents at conferences received their dibbles report and their iReady report, with also an explanation of those assessments.
All right. What about the, so there won't be a conference when the second round of those goes out? How do those get to parents?
We can mail them. We also have, I think, a way of doing it in parent's prayer now, it's like the certified documents are...
I think the harder one is the end year, 'cause we have the March, so we usually go over that data.
Yeah, so it's the end of the year.
The end of the year that kind of goes home and forth.
I know with the dibbles, I bring that up because some of the, I know dibbles, it just gives the parents things that they can do at home right away, and those, it's kind of important to get right to the few things that dibbles calls out. So that's why I was concerned that some of the data might be old, so that stuff for the parents to do, or try to work with their children at home, might be pretty old data if they, if they wait for, if they wait for a conference, or if they miss a conference. How do they get home if they miss a conference?
We would send it home with a student.
All right.
And it sounds like you had a calling, doing follow-up phone calls.
Yeah, yeah. Luckily, we had most of our families come to the conference, so they received it, but no, it would be sent home with the student for the family with a follow-up.
All right. All right, great. Well, I really appreciate what you're doing.
Thank you for your questions.
Well, I have a, I have a question. The 2024, I know you were on here for 2024, 25 action plans.
Yeah.
But do the teachers think that these action plans helped them accomplish whatever the goals were for the school? And did you carry any of them over to this school year?
So I don't, I can't speak to how the student, or the teachers felt about the action steps from the 24, 25. I can't speak to the conversations I've had with individual teachers about the action steps going forward. And a lot of it, again, is based on the data that they had in front of them from the SBA. And then I gave each teacher their individual data and had conversations around that. So I think they understand why we're working on what we're working on, because we directly tied it back to their performance, if that makes sense. I'm sorry, their students' performance.
We met with the teachers, no, we met with some of the GEA members, and they said that they don't think the kids are having fun in school. And how can we bring back fun into the classroom? And one of the things was, kids aren't reading books. They're reading, you know, excerpts from a book or something, and they, and so their thing was, where are the big books that you used to have for the kids? I don't know, can you give me some feedback on that? And field trips also? What is your view on field trips? Do you have enough field trips for the kids?
I haven't heard any complaints from teachers about that, so I think, but again, I've only, you know, it's not field trip season yet, too. I have not heard anything from teachers about, about field trips. I can, looking at the smiles on the faces of the students throughout the day and going into the classrooms, it seems to me they're having fun, maybe too much fun sometimes. But, so I'm not, not seeing, seeing that. And they haven't made, like, I know all the rest of the schools, too, they have a lot of opportunities for, like, extended, extended learning beyond the classroom, music lessons, and being a part of chorus, and then, you know, the community meetings that we're doing and the school spirit days, so I'm not seeing that.
Discovery blocks.
Yeah, discovery blocks, yeah.
Rensouille, Reese kind of UConn thing.
Yeah, yeah. With the books in hand, you know, I'm coming, I came from a district that did workshop. I know that you guys had workshop for many, many years, and then we switched to Whit and Wisdom. I think that teachers are still trying to find the opportunities for students to have books in their hand as well, at their level, just for the passion of reading. I still, I think it's, we have a new program with Whit and Wisdom being last year, but just finding that, that time within their day, so that kids have books in their hands, too.
And they still go to libraries, they have choice.
Yeah, I definitely see, like, epic often.
And lots of books in the classroom.
Yep. But I think that it's important with the Whit and Wisdom that they are really learning how to approach these complex texts, because it's gonna be something they need to do their whole, whole life, is to have those skills and those strategies to attack those texts. So I understand with Whit and Wisdom what they're doing. I don't know if I answered your question. Kind of.
Kind of keeping a balance, something.
Yeah.
And what do you think about the schedule in the elementary level? Does that, I don't know, does that hinder the students from progressing in literacy and math, or can we do a better schedule?
That is something that, now that I'm living our schedule, that there will be some changes to the schedule that make, ensure that tier-one instruction is the priority. But it is that balance of seeing some of our high-need students just so excited to pick up the cello and go to music lessons, and that's what's maybe bringing them to school that day. So I'm making sure I'm not making sweeping changes based on experiences I had, but really trying to balance what Charles Barnum has, but noticing that there needs to be a little bit of increase with the tier-one timeframes in our schedule.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ian, you have a question?
Oh, yes, thank you. And thank you for the presentation. It sounds really good, and I like the layered approach that you've probably discussed. I'm just curious, curious to know if you could, you know, give us some examples of some of the action steps you might give after consulting with teachers and looking at the data and say, there is some kind of intervention needed? Or some way to bubble up the scores or interactivity with some of the students, like, say, math or science, just, you know, just an example of what county might adjust the instruction or coach the teachers to adjust.
Sure, yeah, absolutely. So one of the, yeah, it doesn't have page numbers, but it's one of the, the district priorities with the four, four rows. My initial observations, like, just went around the school, and again, I'm just trying to get to know the teachers, get to know the students, but I'm noticing that we need students to do some more of that heavy lifting. And so, you know, some definitely teacher-directed lessons, that I would like the learning and the real task demands to be handed over to the students to increase that productive struggle. So that's been some of the conversations I've had with, with teachers, is how can we release some of that responsibility and just trust that students are gonna struggle for a little bit, but it's, it's good, and that we're gonna be there to support them, but we need to let, and give them a chance to do that. I'm hoping that's gonna increase, hopefully, scores, because when they get to that test at the end of the year, and when we are not a part of that, and teachers are not a part of that, they really need to be able to do it on their own. So that's definitely some conversations I've had. I've had some conversations with teachers, again, about being really strategic with their win blocks based on data, so that you are coming up with a specific goal for that group of students, and that you are targeting that goal, progress monitoring them before switching them to a different goal.
Can you explain the win block?
Yeah, so the win what I need. So it's just the built-in intervention block for both ELA and math that we have in our
All right, Ian.
All right, I just wanna say thank you for that, and appreciate your efforts, and it sounds good.
Thank you.
On the page that says accelerated academic achievement, what is meant by a full-rate student-centered approaches that extend learning stamina?
So again, I think it's that, that piece of really balancing the teacher-directed instruction versus releasing the responsibility to the student. And if we continue to have really high teacher-directed instruction, and with students not having the opportunity to take a risk on their own, that they're not gonna be able to build that stamina to continue to try challenging things, to persevere through those challenges.
Any other questions? Might be nothing.
You guys ask my questions, actually.
You don't wanna ask them again?
I'm fine, I'm fine, you're good.
Thank you very much, Stephanie. We appreciate it.
All right, thank you.
It wasn't that bad, right?
It wasn't that bad, no.
We'll see you next weekend. See you back next week.
Yeah, you're right, yeah.
All right, Tish, you're next.
I'm next. So I'm the principal of Catholic Kelnaski. We are, it says 349, but today we're at 351. We had two new students enroll in the last few days, so we have the early learning skills program within our building. Most people refer to it as the LSP. Our student makeup, it says 46% free and reduced lunch. I will say, I question that number, because that would be 15 to 20% less than what we've been in the past, so I'm not quite sure why our free and reduced lunch dropped so significantly. 17% special education and 4% of English language learners. We were making improvement with our chronic absenteeism until last year, and it went way up. We did analyze that when it was happening. We had a few students that, a couple of students that had surgeries that were, you know, it's not, it's easy to hit 18 days when you have something medical going on. And then a lot of it is our special ed population and students traveling out of the country. Our theme is STEAM. We are the STEAM Magnet School. STEAM is STEM plus the arts. We offer guaranteed experiences to all of our students in science, engineering, coding, robotics, and maker education. We have our piano lab, which starts in grade one. All of our students start with music lessons on the piano in grade one, and we begin strings in grade two. We also offer additional opportunities with Lego Robotics and our drone flying team. We have partnerships with the Connecticut Science Center, Project Owen Ness. We also have partnership with Mystic Arts Center and the Niantic Children's Museum. There's no room for me to put it in the box.
Can you explain maker education, creative?
So maker education is students, really explore students' creativity and their engineering skills in, in creating, either creating for fun, to make something, or to solve a problem. So we offer an array of maker materials and maker tools. We call it, we have an extraordinary amount of recyclables in our, that we collect in our building, and students make things from little robots that might draw picture, you know, pictures for you, some type of wall art. They learn how to connect things and through that learn what shapes are stronger shapes in engineering. Certain shapes can support, where other shapes will collapse if you're putting weight on them, and it helps build those engineering skills, along with exploring that creative side.
Thank you.
Looking at our academic achievement and our S back over time, you can see that in ELA, particularly in our fifth grade, we made some nice gains over time. If you're looking at our cohorts, you can see third grade, if you're starting in twenty twenty-two, twenty-three, our third grade went from forty-three percent up to fifty-five percent as fourth graders in twenty twenty-three and to sixty-two percent in twenty-four, twenty-five. So if you're looking at non cohort groups, there was, you know, a nice increase in fifth grade from, you know, two years at fifty percent up to sixty-two percent. You see those increases. But also looking at those cohorts in just the the last couple of years has been nice in ELA. In math, our our growth is a little bit more scattered. You know, third grade dipped down into fourth grade, but went back up in fifth grade and it's holding relatively steady. But these are our students that are at or above benchmark. What you don't see there is the amount of growth that our students are making, particularly in math. And that's what we were really proud of this past year is the amount of growth that our students made. If you're looking at this graph, really, it's those students who are approaching the benchmark. You can see at CK, they're pretty evenly spread throughout that. Those level two students, it's almost fifty fifty for both ELA and math performance. For those that are in the lower group and the higher group, here, take a couple of percentage points. And MGSS over time, we have really worked with our partnership with the Connecticut Science Center on our science instruction and offered a lot of science opportunities. So in the last couple of years, we had a nice growth in in science. Both years, sixty-seven percent of our students at or above benchmark. We're really proud of that that percentage. Really proud that this year we have the highest percentage in the district. And for, you know, Bev, you were here way back when I first started at CK. That's like something I'm really proud of.
And you were a school of distinction.
And a school of distinction. But that science percentage, that is not an easy test. And so I'm just really proud of our students for how they did on that test. Looking at last year's goal, really, our goal in last year was increasing student achievement for all of our students. We didn't target any particular group. We believe that every student should be making growth, even if you are in the above benchmark group. So we were put in strategies in place to increase our students' performance in ELA math and science. In ELA, you know, you saw what our overall at or above benchmark students were. But forty percent of our grade four and five students made greater, equal to or greater than a hundred percent of their growth target. A lot of our students maxed out their growth target, which maxes out at a hundred and ten percent, no matter how much growth you make. And fifty percent of those students were classified as high growth. That was a decrease from the year before. Our ELA rough cohort comparison, we had, you know, fifty percent students that were high growth in grade four and that increased to fifty-five percent of high growth in grade five. And our percentage of students K to four that were at or above on DIBELS went from fifty-two percent to sixty-five percent at the end of the year, with thirty-five percent of our students increasing one or more levels. So that was a really nice improvement. In math, you see that same even greater, fifty-four percent of our grade four and five students made a hundred percent or more of the growth target with sixty-four percent of them classified as high growth, which was an increase from fifty-six percent. And that rough cohort comparison was thirty-eight percent high growth in fourth grade to seventy-three percent of our students with high growth in fifth grade. And in science, we maintained that sixty-seven percent at or above grade level despite the fact that we had small drops in ELA and in math from, you know, the previous cohort. While those scores went down a little bit, our science scores held steady.
And that science test is a little bit of a reading test and a little bit of a math test and a lot of science, so it requires everything.
And definitely, yeah. Takes a lot of organization. Our school action steps for this year, excuse me, really is implementing the district curriculum, utilizing our programs, much like Stephanie said, you know, using those pacing guides and assessment calendars, making sure that we're actually getting into the curriculum, but not following it, you know, just rotelessly step by step, making sure that we're meeting our students' needs. We're providing incorporating those student centered instructional strategies such as project based learning. I just had two teachers go for a training on project based learning to help us incorporate more of that this year. Accountable talk has been a goal of ours for the last three years and we're seeing just great improvements in the classroom and in the students' ability to write responses because they can speak their responses. They know how to do it through accountable talk, the play based learning in kindergarten, and building thinking classrooms, which we started last year and we've really expanded this year, particularly in grades two through five, using those vertical spaces into our daily lessons. We are utilizing our data from the scheduled learning walks that we have in literacy, math, and science, along with the data that we collect from our benchmark assessments, IABs and unit assessments. And we review that data at grade level data team meetings and make decisions about what are we doing moving forward, not only for our students who are struggling in a particular area, but what are we doing to accelerate our students who are at the high end as well.
Chris, to the people that are watching, can you tell us what IABs stands for?
The IABs are the interim assessment.
Blocks.
I think he is blocks. The interim assessment block, so they're connected to the S back test. But there are small portions of the, you know, where in S back, when you take a, you're taking the math S back, you're doing all of number and operations where an interim assessment block might look specifically at fractions. We're doing one this week that looks specifically at volume. So they're just the small blocks that give us a snapshot into how the students would perform.
Thank you.
And did I get to the last one?
No.
Nope, I don't think so. And the equitable access to resources. We're doing grade level and classroom teacher MTSS meetings every six to ten weeks to review the student academic progress and plan for either.
Chris, can you tell the audience what MTSS means?
The multi-tiered systems of support, which is the new name for SRBI, which was the Connecticut name for RTI response.
And we have a whole acronym. We just call it intervention.
To plan for both enrichment and intervention. Moving on to our culture and climate, we're happy, you know, our trusted adult data has, you know, is pretty good and is increasing. We did find in previous years, you know, when it had increased, we would drop off our focus on that. And as soon as you you're not focusing on it, that percentage drops because students aren't really thinking about, when we ask the question, there's some a trusted adult who can help me, when they take that survey, they're not really thinking, what does that mean, you know, what is a trusted adult? So we make sure that we continually talk about trusted adults and who they are and how you identify them.
Do kids include kindergarten kids?
Yeah.
Wow.
Yep.
That must take some explanation.
Yes.
It is their classroom teacher.
Yeah, a lot of it's a classroom teacher, but they, a lot of them, you know, they know it might be the social worker, art teacher, could be the paraprofessional, you know, that they seek out and walk around with at recess. And our parental and caregiver involvement has always been high. We're really proud of our parental involvement in our school. And being able to participate in PD fluctuates just a little bit, but about two thirds of the people feel that their PD is directly related to their position. I think from my experience where that falters just a little bit is our interventionists, our like our reading interventionists are often involved in the reading PD, but they're not actually teaching the wit and wisdom program. They're teaching intervention and so they're often looking for professional development that's specific to reading intervention. And I think it's individuals like that that tend to not where the PD isn't always directly connected to what they're teaching. And I think that happens too sometimes with the special education teachers. They need to be aware of the programs and familiar with the programs, but they also feel like they, you know, they need more PD on intervention. And so.
Oh, can I ask you another question? And I didn't ask you this question, Stephanie, but how do you?
There's no going back.
How are your PTOs? Are they?
Oh, that's a whole nother. That's a whole conversation.
Okay.
I'll come back to that.
All right.
So our action steps for the physical and mental well being of our staff, we utilize our school, we have a school community events team who coordinates activities and events for both students and staff. We, you know, do a lot of spirit days, a lot of fun activities. And they also lead our, the community events, our community service projects as well. We incorporate conversations about a trusted adult, adults who can help you and where to go when you're having a problem or big feelings and what that word belonging means because the word belonging comes up in the survey and a lot of students really just don't understand what belonging mean, what what does that mean? So we talk about that in our weekly second step lessons. We also do our morning meetings and our recess wrap ups and we bring those conversations up frequently. And we're working on identifying our students who are in need of mentors and referring them to the mentor program. We have a lot of students at CK who have mentors and we're always looking for more mentors. For anyone out there who's watching, consider becoming a mentor for our students in Groton. It's a very rewarding position to have, come in and help our students. We have weekly communication with families. I send weekly communication to our families every Sunday night and our teachers also send out, most of our teachers send out weekly communication and it provides those important reminders. We make sure that we make positive phone calls. We don't just want to text or email, but we want to actually talk to parents. So we have a goal of making positive phone calls to parents so that, you know, they don't always feel like we're only calling if there's a problem. And we like to offer personal invitations to upcoming events. For SEL strategies, we explicitly teach and model our SEL skills using the second step program. We encourage a broad representation of our staff on school and district committees, including our school, including in school committee leadership. Not all of our school committees are led by me or Mr. Viness. A lot of our teachers take on those leadership roles in our committees just to ensure that all voices are contributing and we're building our student leadership opportunities with school ambassadors. We're looking at school photographers, communication assistants, ways that our students can have more leadership. And finally, we're leveraging the school attendance team to track student attendance daily and identify those students in need of intervention and providing those tiered systems of support. As of Friday, our chronic absenteeism this year is twelve point five percent. It crept up in the last two weeks. We had a low absent, a low attendance rate on the two Mondays before we had the Tuesdays off was something that we noticed. Early dismissal days, our kids are here, we have ninety-seven percent on our early dismissal days, but we had school on Monday and off on Tuesday and our attendance rate dropped to ninety-one percent on those days. But our typical, our average attendance rate is ninety-five point something percent overall and many days we're at ninety-six or ninety-seven. So it's looking at those patterns of when kids are not coming to school. Is there, is that the end or is there one more? That's the end. So back to my PTO. My PTO consists of two members. Both of them are fifth grade parents. So if there's anyone out here who's a CK parent, please, I beg every month for people to please come to our PTO. We've tried everything to try to get parental involvement at the PTO. Our family events have, we have.
There's so many, they they flush.
Hundreds of people show up for our family events, but PTO.
Maybe PTOs might be a thing of the past.
Yeah, I think.
With both parents working and more single families, you know.
I think it goes back to what I shared with Jamie and Sean, that if the events are there, as a parent, I would go, but me putting an event together for other parents, yeah, I'd rather spend it with my kid, you know. So, well, back in the day, now he's like that and, you know, so I'm feeling.
You know, we offer, we have great snacks, free childcare. Yeah. We've, you know, offered gifts to classrooms that have the, you know, the most parents that come, but yeah, PTO is a struggle.
You think transportation could be a problem?
I think for some families that could be true. But we have, you know, we have an event coming up, our Cookies and PJs Night, December ninth, come on, join us. And I think last year at Cookies and PJs, we had something like four hundred people.
And STEM Night is all.
Come for Cookies and PJs.
That's amazing.
But I've got two people on my PTO.
Oh, wow. And STEM Night, like Susan was saying, I went to STEM Night at your school, which.
Yeah.
Yeah. Any questions? Adrian.
I was gonna let Mike go.
Okay.
That's true. Thank you for your presentation. When I was looking at Charles Barnham and CK, I saw at least in terms of these student makeup statistics, it looked relatively similar in amount of high need students. Maybe CK had a bit more. I'm not sure that the statistics capture everything because of the military component. But and then I see with the scores in ELA and the math, they're quite a bit higher at CK than they are at Charles Barnham. I'm wondering, does the STEAM magnet focus help elevate your scores or is there another driver that I'm not thinking about?
I would like to think that it does. I just don't know how I would tease that out to say that that's the, you know, how much of an impact our STEAM program has versus the way we provide intervention versus, you know, versus our instruction in the classroom. Those are the things that are, it's really hard to tease out. It's only easy to pick out the things that don't work, but it's hard to know. It, it's only easy to pick out the things that don't work, but it's hard to know if the things that do work, which one is working better than the other.
There's so many variables.
You know, cause there are a lot of variables. But I do, since we became a STEAM school, our scores have steadily increased, our attendance has steadily increased, and our behavior has steadily decreased. So I'd like to think that that has a lot to do with it.
Yeah, and we, again, we looked at, um, the, kind of, the magnet map where, where students go and some schools like CK were a net, everyone's choosing to go to, there are people that choose to go to any given school that wouldn't geographically be there otherwise, uh, but CK is a net attractor of students. I believe, uh, Charles Barnum, um, though it does attract some students, um, more students choose to go, uh, to other magnet schools rather than to come to Charles Barnum. And so, uh, and I actually, I don't know as much about the discovery theme, but, but, um, the fact that the students are working on something and presenting it out to, uh, parents and, and their peers, uh, a few times a year sounds just wonderful. So, but, uh, I ju, I was just wondering before coming here tonight, that, uh, maybe the STEAM theme could be at more than one school. And, and so, you know, we could have two STEAM schools, cause it does seem very successful. Or, or maybe some elements of it could be brought in, um, within the discovery umbrella.
They all have a little STEAM. They're all a little STEAM.
I was gonna say, everybody's definitely more arts.
You know, you knew NEA was really the arts school all along, but we do have STEM kinds of things and we have assured experiences for field trips and Ben Moon, I think, really bringing it together and helping enhance our magnet themes has been really valuable. So I think we're headed in the right direction, but you're right. STEAM is popular.
You could even apply discovery to all different topics.
I would say we are working on that and, um, trying to include some more inquiry into, which is very much, uh, STEAM, you know, into our discovery, but.
I think an important thing to remember is we've been a magnet school since CK opened.
Yeah.
Right, so we, and we became a STEAM school a long time ago.
When the theme didn't just fit just right. It was you who kinda came along and said, this isn't really working.
Catherine Polaski was not working.
Uh-uh.
And so I did come to the board and asked, request permission to change our magnet focus. Because we had, you know, we were a magnet school, that's, that was part of building the state plan for building our building, was that we would be an introduced magnet. So we've been doing our program for a long time where Charles Barnum, Northeast Academy, not Northeast, Charles Barnum, TR and MR have been the shortest amount of time. So, and it takes time to build a program. It takes a, a lot of time because it's a lot, you know, for the teachers to learn in addition to what they're already teaching and how to incorporate those, whatever your magnet theme is, into your instruction. So I would expect that you will probably see some leveling out over time.
Jen?
I think Adrian was before me.
Adrian's gonna have a lot of questions.
No, I haven't even raised my hand yet.
There's one for Susan, but I just wanted, um, I think, Mike, regarding your comment regarding STEAM, cause even when themes came in, um, their, theirs was higher because of the science component and my working with Project O and, oh, and staff, so I did notice that, I guess. One of the things, um, I know you mentioned attendance, like overall attendance, how about the chronic absenteeism? Is that like, um, an issue at your school as well?
Well, our chronic absenteeism last year was almost 19%. Right now, as of Friday, our chronic absenteeism was 12.5%.
Oh, that's a 12, I thought that was the regular, just absentee, okay.
No.
No, thank you.
That's our chronic absenteeism and we, you know, we've looked at those students, we've sorted them into categories. For the, the reason behind their chronic absenteeism, we have a cluster of students, right now it's five or six that are medical, that, you know?
There's nothing you can do about that.
That's just the way it is. We have about seven that are travel, um, whether, some are travel because they just take vacations during the school year, sometimes the military are, you know, that's when they can take their vacation is during the school year. And for some, they have to travel out of the country, um, to have their visas renewed. And that is always, as soon as you have to do that, you are chronically absent. Because that's typically 20, takes about 20 school days for most students who have to travel out of the country for that.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I would-
When they, when they travel for that length of time, do you give them schoolwork to do?
They can access our, um, the computer programs if they have access to the internet. So they can still work on iReady, um, they have digital books, we encourage them to read books, we might let them know, but missing the instruction, there's not a lot of work that you can send that gets you beyond a couple of days because you're not getting the instruction that goes with the work.
So this is more a question, like, district-wise, rather, I have two now. When you're gone for that amount of time, should we, like, take them out of the district and assume they're not enrolled? And I don't know what the state regulations and the state rules-
You can't do not.
They would have to be, they would have to register in another school. Or the family would-
Homeschool.
Choose to homeschool them.
Okay.
And there are some that do decide to do that if it's a real journey. But mostly they stay enrolled and they come back.
They, they, you miss the days.
But the state has really put a clamp on just letting them come and go in and out.
Yeah. And then second, um, this is just more on a district, so not necessarily towards Chris, but, um, there, there seemed to be a decrease regarding that professional development. They're all like in their 60s and 70s, is that something? Emily can look at, like, I know she's in charge of that section.
And last year was her first year doing it and they are reviewing the data after each one. We really felt the paraeducators gave us some real good feedback about, a lot of the lessons that they had were online and I think we needed to engage them more and have more discussion around it. It wasn't that they were poor, they were really pretty quality, some even told us that, but it just kinda leaves you flat when you can't discuss it or do something with it. So we've really made sure that we have paraeducators on our Groton Teaching and Learning collab. That's the group that all plans all of the PD and that's helped because they've given some honest feedback and, and, you know, really helped us to decide. I think you helped that process along too.
Yeah, it's, you know, the TL, the, the, the full day PD days, we always have a, an in-person speaker for the parents, um, because that's what they've requested and that's, you know, you're gonna get the most leverage out of a PD session if you have a speaker and you can, you know, break out into groups or, you know, you know, parent share. But I think it is the TLI days and those sometimes are tricky because sometimes we don't always have a facilitator to facilitate those groups.
But we do try to have a facilitator available, but sometimes on the TLI days, everyone has an activity that they're doing. But that's basically, I think, as Susan said, where they gain, they get the most leverage is when they can watch a module and then discuss it in deep brief with, with the group. Or sometimes the assistant principals will work with them around just procedures and recess and all kinds of building issues.
Building issues, yep.
But they are kinda near and dear to their heart.
So that means we hope to see some improvement-
Yeah.
With the parents and their PD days.
Yep, that's exactly right.
And then, if that happens, we hope to see that score go up. If not, then the teachers are having a problem too.
Yeah. Sometimes I think also, um, because this is a question that's on the survey, the climate survey, sometimes I think that question is interpreted very literally in terms of this PD is directly related to my job. Sometimes they don't think some of the PD, like, there's mandated section 504 training. They don't necessarily think that's directly related to their job and I can understand that. But there is some mandated trainings that we all have to take that might not be directly related to our job, but we still need to be aware of it to be, you know, informed, um, you know, professionals or paraprofessionals.
Great. My last one. So Chris, um, I still am keeping track about the split for the music room and the, um, liaison office, so that's still, like, we asked about it.
Yeah, we just asked about it at facilities and, um-
And I pulled up the, uh, known.
Yeah, yeah, I, I pulled up the, the Google Doc again and they have a new Google Doc for next year, what kinds of, um, before the budget, pre-budget, what kinds of things need, um, painting and, you know, anything that's facilities related, so we can kinda get that on the agenda so we can bring it to you for budget time.
Chris, do you look at the, and Stephanie, you too, do you look at the test scores of the chronically absent, am I?
You could lay lower until you present. Yeah, I'm just kidding.
Do you look at the test scores of the chronically absent and see, are they low or do those kids, even though they go away for 20 days, they do just as well?
It's a mix. There, there are some kids that are out for 28 days and they're doing great. And then there's some kids that are out, you know, for 18 days, they just hit that chronically absent and they're struggling. And it really depends on the student.
And when you, when they come back and you see that they're struggling, do you give them extra help? Are they going through one of those tiers or something?
They will. They will, event, they won't go in immediately, um, because the tiers work in a cycle. But if they're, if they're not, many of them are already in one of the tiered interventions anyway.
The same-
So I would say, um, the same, that, uh, most of the ones I have dug into though, um, their test scores were definitely affected by it. And when we talk about like chronically absent, it's not just right over 18. There are definitely, we have students 35, 45.
Yeah.
And if we then, when I met with the parents, we went historically, so I was able to present to a lot of families, 55, 35.
Bless you.
Sorry, got distracted. Just the amount of time is not just a, a tiny bit over the 18, it's significant. So, yeah.
You wanna jump in and answer that question that last?
Yeah, one of the things that we've been looking at with our attendance board is the, the percentage of kids that are chronically absent that are high-needs kids versus non-high-needs because that number in our building is typically about double. And so that's, that's bringing our overall percentage up. Chris is right, it is hard to predict. It's, it's a little bit of, um, kids, absences don't seem to affect them and then there's other kids where clearly you can see, not just, um, the summative tests, but on those practice tests, those IAVs, that their scores are suffering because they haven't been there for the instruction.
Thank you.
Yep.
Adrian?
All right. It shows, it, it's impressive how well your scores are given the, the high-needs or like the economic high-needs, which is kind of the, the thing that we can really relate those two things just in general. So, um, so I think you do, it's, your staff does a great job, you know, at teaching given that need. So I appreciate that. So I just have, uh, some different, different things, but how, how does the Witten Wisdom roll out and how does your staff feel about, um, Witten Wisdom program and its effectiveness in teaching kids to read? Like, how is that really working?
And I can only speak to my building, though we are doing some, you know, walkthroughs in other buildings, so I'm starting to see it in other buildings. But for my building, it's been going, I would say, relatively smooth in terms of rolling out a new program, particularly one that is very different from the program that we were in. It is very different from the workshop model. Most of the teachers are happy with the work that the students are doing. They've, um, they're doing a lot of a different kind of writing, so, um, their response to text is really improving in their written responses to the stories and the Witten Wisdom has a high rigor level, right? And that's not a bad thing. But it is a, a little bit of a struggle in the first couple of years that you're implementing it, because we're implementing it K to five, for those fourth and fifth graders, this is a big jump, where for our kindergartners and first graders, not, not so much because this is just the expectation there at the beginning. But when you've been doing that program for four years and then you hit fourth grade and now we're asking you to do something that's really very different. There was a lot of backfilling and a little bit of struggle with that shift, but I think it's going really well. I have, um, in 19 classroom teachers and I would say 17 out of the 19 are happy with the program.
All right, all right, that's, that's great to hear. Is there, um, do you think that we do enough PD on Witten Wisdom or could it be, if we did more PD, would that, would that help the effectiveness of the program?
Well, that's a tough question to answer.
Well, I know we have a certain amount of PJs by-
We do have a certain amount. I think, um, I think if you were to just go to Witten Wisdom and say, I need some PD and they came in and they gave us their, their, whatever their next module of PD is, I don't know that that would really be so effective. I think if we look at, you know, so where are we struggling with the teaching strategies that go with Witten Wisdom, um, the things that we're not, that we haven't had a lot of PD in, some of what we learned through Teachers College transfers over nicely and some of it, I think we need some of the strategies and the instructional approaches that we're using. We probably could use more PD, but I don't, I'm, I tend to think that PD just going to Witten Wisdom and buying their next package is not the answer.
Yeah, one of the things that I've noticed this year, which is much different than last year, is the pacing around the program this year is much better. It took us a long time to get through module one last year and that was to be expected. It's a brand-new program. But with the exception of one team in my building, everyone has already moved on to module two and some of them are well into module two. And that's indicative of what you've heard from them already is that we have a new program, we have a new curriculum, but as I said to Susan the other day, you, you don't need to be robotic. So as we go through the program, there are things, there are adjustments that we can make because it's year two, which allows us to be more in tune with the program, whereas last year, because it was brand-new, we wanted to make sure that we did everything because we weren't, we weren't sure if we could not teach that or if we had to do that. So it's that learning curve that I think has gotten easier.
All right, I agree. Yeah, all right, well, thank you for that. The other thing I was wondering is how much time during the day is spent administering that curriculum? And what do we have, how many learning hours are there in the day when you're not at lunch or recess, you know, in elementary? Is that an easy number to? Maybe that's, the number's variable depending on-
It varies by grade, but it's, it's gonna be around four, four and a half.
But I would say, so just the day, you have really about six and a quarter hours and then you gotta take out the 55 minutes for lunch and recess and, so now you're down to five and a quarter hours and if you're, if you wanna take out specials, that's another 40 minutes. So now we're down to four and a half hours.
And then there's transition times and all these other things, so, so the-
Right.
So what I'm wondering is how much time is spent on Witten Wisdom? And then I guess that same question for, um, for math. So how much of that, like, those two things, how much of the grade is that?
A little bit by building, but in general, it's, in my building this year, it's 65 minutes of Witten Wisdom plus 15 of the deep dive, which is part of Witten Wisdom. So it's 80 minutes of Witten Wisdom, most- So it's eighty minutes of wit and wisdom most days. There is one day that, where it's a little bit less.
Does that include the phonics and the Haggerty?
Well, that, no, that's wit and wisdom.
So it, so reading instruction, I don't know if we go encompassing it.
So if you're looking at wit and wisdom, we're looking at eighty minutes in general. For fourth and fifth grade, because of band and, you know, things like that, they have a day where they get a little bit less than that, eighty minutes. In K through three, they also have another twenty-five to thirty minutes of phonics instruction, um, which falls under that ELA umbrella. They're usually fitting their Haggerty in, in that same block of time. Math instruction is usually about an hour. Um, some grade levels, it might be fifty minutes. Some grade levels might have sixty-five, but it's about an hour of math instruction. At CK, we do an, we do individual wind blocks. We have an ELA wind block and a math wind block. Those are each thirty minutes long. We have science for thirty minutes, two days a week, and forty-five minutes, one day a week. So we can do the longer experiments. And that's across the board in every grade level. And then we've got grade levels who have oral language that are in there, thirty minutes once a week or thirty minutes twice a week for fifth grade.
All right, so, so getting back to where I would start with this is, does the staff feel that, like, the day is a little bit compressed trying to get through all of that curriculum?
Yes.
I could have asked that much easier.
You didn't mention social studies. However, I have heard from the teachers that Wit and Wisdom has done a nice job. Kind of pairing, integrating the social studies. I just saw Ryan O'Connell at the Seaport and he was doing some welding of metal. And that's his gig, you know, and I saw Charlie Whiteloff also, bacon bread. But they were, you know, he was saying that it really meshes nicely. He feels like in his fifth grade curriculum, he's still getting to social studies through the Wit and Wisdom and, you know.
Is that all true for Ryan and Stephanie?
I would say so.
Very similar. The day is very tight.
But it is tight.
The day is
From nine AM to, until dismissal. And elementary kids, they have to transition and they have to go to the bathroom. They have to do those types of things. You gotta have them, you gotta have snack, right? So the day is very tight for a elementary student. It really is.
They're working hard all day long, teachers and kids.
And though our day ends at, on paper, at three thirty-five, you know, we can't go to three thirty-five and have the bell ring and say
Get on the bus!
Like they can at the middle school and the high school. You know, it takes time to get these kids packed up and out the door on the right bus.
Safely.
Or in the car, the right car, with the right parents. And, you know, so that is just another little piece of time that you have to look at. You know, we've gotten that down to fifteen minutes. But that is fifteen minutes of our day to make sure that we get every student where they're supposed to be.
Who has to go to the bathroom? All that.
And then the last question, if our chair will allow me to ask another question, because I know it takes a little bit of time. But, um, how do you feel about the, the amount of support staff that you have for like, for, you know, ELA and math? And to a lesser extent, science?
I was hoping you were gonna ask me when you asked her. I was running through my head. I was just talking with Susan about this Friday. I really feel like we need a math interventionist. And I have a math specialist, one math specialist, who's a certified teacher. And she does a lot of coaching. She sees kids for some grade levels a little bit, but she mostly is coaching teachers, um, teaching math. And then we have tutors. I have one and a half math tutors. What I really need is a math interventionist, a certified teacher, um, to help. Just like in, you know, English Language Arts, we, we have, in reading, I've got my reading specialist and two reading interventionists who are certified teachers. We don't have that same certified teacher support in math, and we really need it. And I know, you know, tutors are less expensive. But I would take, you know, a math, I really need a math interventionist, a certified teacher, to help with the math.
How about ELA support? Do you have enough there?
Well, we can always use more. But I feel like I'm okay in, in ELA. I have the reading specialist, I have two interventionists, and I have one and a half tutors, um, to, to help ELA. I could use another SEL tutor. That would be really, um, if I were to say what I need and be reasonable about it, I need an SEL tutor and I need a math interventionist.
All right, well, thank you.
Ian?
Uh, thank you. Um, I appreciate all the discourse and, and Adrian hit all the points I was picking out and asking. So thank you, Adrian, for that. Just a quick follow-up on a math interventionist. In your opinion, um, in order to, to secure one, what do you think it would take? What do you think would be the best way to attract, or retain someone of that caliber?
Honestly, I think if we, if the board supported putting up the, you know, financially backing a math interventionist for the building, I think just posting would get you a host of qualified candidates. Because I think there are certified staff that really love teaching math and have a strong understanding of math. And, and really want to work with those students and helping them develop, develop those concepts. I don't think it would be a problem to fill and retain that position. I think it's more challenging for us with the tutor to fill a math, a math tutor position. Because a lot of times, the, um, the qualified staff for the tutor position don't really have a strong instructional background in mathematics. And they may be good at math, but the way that we teach math now is so different from when they went through school. And so there's a lot of reteaching, teaching and reteaching that happens with the tutors. And so that, when we hire another tutor, it often requires my math specialist to spend more time with the tutor to get them up to speed. And that's pulling her away from the classrooms and the students that she's working with. So I don't see the same benefit when we add a tutor as I would see if we were to add a certified staff.
I understand. Appreciate the answer, appreciate the honesty. And, um, as we move into the budget season, I'll, I'll make a note of that and definitely try to advocate, you know, get that input in the budget.
Thank you.
I just think the way you teach math now is better than the way they taught math ten years ago.
Yes. Absolutely.
Or twenty or thirty.
Absolutely.
Can the kids understand it better?
I think many of them do. I think many of them are able to solve more complex problems once they do understand. You know, it comes easily to some students and not so easily to others. But I think once they develop those, that number sense and those concepts, then they're able to apply that to more complex problems. Versus some of the students, you know, ten or fifteen or twenty years ago, when we were really focused on teaching the algorithm of math and teaching them how to procedurally do math. But they didn't understand the, the concepts behind that. And so they, they can't work with numbers easily in their head. So when it comes to more complex problems, they struggle to solve them. They even struggle to understand them. And it's, you know, but it comes naturally to some. That was my strong subject in school. Like, the things that we're teaching kids to do, fortunately, I was able to do in my head. And never understood why other people couldn't. And it's like, oh, well, because they're not teaching us to do that. But, you know, but my dad taught me how to do that. So I, I do think it's, and the way that we're teaching is important and effective.
What grades do you teach, um, foreign language? Just foreign language?
Three, four, and five.
Three, four, and five. Is that a good use of our time, being that, that make like Susan's not here?
No, because I've had the same conversation with Susan. Susan will tell you that I have very honest conversations with, with her all the time. If we had more hours in the day, that's an outstanding use of our time. I think exposing our kids to oral language is important. And I, I love the idea that we're building that through the middle school and the high school. And, you know, and hopefully some of our students who have that seal of literacy. In all honesty, we don't have the minutes in the day. And it is a little bit of a strain, particularly in fifth grade. I, I find it, you know, it, it's not as big a draw on three and four. It's, it's not, you know, I, it's almost, could be, I could argue it's worth the trade-off in three and four. That extra thirty minutes in fifth grade, which I think they need in order to go into the sixth grade. But it really, it's just too much of a, of a draw. It's a huge draw on our schedule.
Especially now with so much of the implementation of so many things.
So many things. And it's, you know, it, yeah. It's hard to give up an hour a week because we're already struggling to fit everything in.
And we're looking more carefully at the groups of kids that maybe that's not the just-right thing that they need. So what does the child need? So there might be children in special ed that need another resource block instead of, or, you know, so we're looking at that more place closely to make sure that we're addressing the kids' needs first.
I hope so.
In theory, I think it's great. But, um, on, on paper, when you're trying to put that schedule together.
It's tight.
I've said bad words about it more than once.
And every hour counts. We were trying to, um, a minute.
Every five minutes counts. Right? Every five minutes, five minutes a day is fifteen hours of instructional school year.
Thank you, Chris.
That puts it in perspective, doesn't it?
Yeah, sure does.
Yeah, plus those minutes.
Am I excused for home?
Yes. All right.
All right. You waited patiently, Ian.
Thank you. So our, um, con enrollment is three hundred and fifty-three students, special programming. We have the TK program at NEA again this year. I do like to share this fun fact. Eight of the kids that were in our TK last year are in our kindergarten this year. Some kids returned to their home school. And of the eight that stayed with us on that Fall DIBELS assessment, and I was very excited to share this with Susan, two of those kids were at benchmark and six of those kids were above. And I think that speaks volumes to the intention of the TK program, which is to set kids up for success in kindergarten. So that was really exciting for us to see, and I wanted to make, make, uh, make sure that I shared that. Twenty-seven percent of our kids, so let me get, six.
Six, thank you.
And again, there were more kids in the class last year, but only eight of them are still with us. Half a dozen kids returned to their home schools.
And that, that's true for all the data pre-KTK. I know Erin is looking at that, and it's gonna be a good segue for our next
Yeah, no, it's about as great if I was next up, right?
Twenty-seven percent free and reduced eligible, sixteen percent special ed, three percent limited English proficiency. We're very proud of our chronic absenteeism numbers. When I started at Northeast seven years ago, I started in, in attendance board at that time. We all know how important it is for school performance. And so we really think it's, it's indicative of our school culture and our school community. So far, we are hovering right around six and a half, seven percent on the current year. So, um, sometimes it's very, it's like I'm harassing parents with communication. But I, I think it's important for them to repeatedly hear from us that being in school is a priority. We have lots of partners at NEA. We are your arts school. So we work with Flock Theater and the Connecticut Storytelling Center, both of whom are out of New London. We work with Carty, who is basically a, a traveling art museum on wheels, the Mystic Museum of Art, United States Coast Guard Band. And then obviously, many of you have been to our Celebrate the Arts Festival, which is held every March. This year, it's on the twelfth and the thirteenth, if you want to make a note of that, um, already. But we'll send out formal invites as the time gets closer. Looking at our academic achievement, um, for ELA and for math, we have identified this year as a staff, a trend of continuing to perform well on our tests, but a little bit of being stagnant. So as much as we want to celebrate that we are hitting some pretty high marks in both ELA and in math, what we're seeing here is we're not showing and, and really earning the amount of growth that we would like to see. When you look at our cohorts, speaking specifically about ELA, on the left-hand side, we saw a little bit of a dip going from third to fourth last year, and then a little bit of an increase going from fourth to fifth. All of those scores really in the high sixties or low seventies in terms of the percentage of kids that are needing benchmark. And over on the right-hand side, looking at math, same thing. Little bit of a dip going from third to fourth in math. Although I will say, I have to say that seventy-one percent two years ago and then sixty-nine percent last year, achievement in those grades is really, um, is really remarkable. That math test is hard. And then fourth to fifth, we saw a little bit of an increase there, um, which we are, we are happy about. But you're gonna continually hear me ta-talk about growth being the theme of our, of our year this year. On the next slide, these are kids that I'll, I'll call the Level Two kids. They're approaching benchmark. I started teasing through this data recently because what we're really looking at here for those kids that are high scale score, that really are kids that are, they scored Level Two, but they are close to being Level Three. And Three is benchmark. So of the twenty kids, or forty-five percent, um, that were high scale score on the left for ELA, fourteen of those kids are still our students. So seventy percent of those kids, fourteen kids, are in our fourth or fifth grade. Six kids went on to the middle school. Those fourteen kids are, are students that we really want to hone in on. In fact, you'd be surprised that three or four of those kids were one point off. And that's one question. When you really look closely at the data and you look at the ranges of the scaled scores, you, you laugh like, oh, gosh, that ultimately is one question that the kid possibly got wrong. On the right side, math, thirty-seven kids had a high scale score. Again, that's a high two. Only twenty of those kids are still with us. Fifty-four percent of them, that means seventeen of those kids have, have left the district or gone to the middle school. So those twenty kids will be kids that we focus on explicitly. Between both of those bars, um, there were four kids that were high scale score in both. So those are kids that we, um, that we definitely want to kind of push over that final hurdle there.
I wonder about the low scale.
The low scale scores, it's the same thing. Those scores, so every child, as Chris mentioned, um, they have growth targets. And the growth target depends upon where you scored and where, where they want you to go. Those kids will still get that same instruction during the DI block that I'll get to in a moment. But when we talk about growth and we're trying to increase those Level Threes and Level fours, in terms of our data analysis, we started with the, with the high scale scores.
And why is that?
What's that?
Why is that?
Just where we are in our process.
What, how many of the thirteen kids, uh, for math are still with you in the low scale?
We haven't gotten there yet.
Okay.
Yeah, we haven't gotten there yet. Science scores over time, we saw a bit of a dip last year. With sixty-six percent of our kids hitting the mark on that test. I think we've heard a couple of us say that that's I think we've heard a couple of us say that that science test is really hard. Interestingly, we had the same number of kids meet benchmark. It was fifty-two kids both years. But last year was, we had that bubble class at Northeast where we had to keep rolling teachers up to keep class sizes down. We had seventy-nine kids in that grade, which would have made class sizes at about twenty-six or twenty-seven. So we saw a little bit of a dip there in terms of the percentage of kids that hit benchmark. So accelerating academic achievement, our action step focuses for last year. Continuing to use, and you've heard these acronyms so far, the IABs and the focused IABs, the F-I-ABs, which are really not that much different, just another acronym to throw at you. To inform instruction delivered by classroom teachers. And then last year, for reading, really getting into that M-class DIBELS platform that Adrian was speaking about, really trying to hone in on individualized growth. And so coming into this year, looking at the scores that we have in front of us, we're sort of at this conundrum where we say to ourselves, we're scoring well, but we're not necessarily moving kids. So what are we going to do differently about that this year? So I actually took this terminology from Anne Marie. You know, while performance scores at NEA are generally high, there is little to no growth when tracking cohorts from year to year. This remains a high-focused priority for school staff. With the addition of a second math tutor, I put thank you to the board because we did lose a math tutor for a couple of years. We now have a second math tutor to make a three-person math team again. That allows us to see more students and meet the needs of more kids overall. And we extended our DI block. I think other colleagues call it the win block. But we've extended that time in our schedule, the differentiated instruction block, to forty-five minutes a day to give teachers more time to work with kids in small group settings. So we are really excited about not just having that person back, but trying to really beef up that time for students in small groups with their teachers. The district priorities on the left on the next slide, those come right from our strategic plans. You're going to hear a lot of redundancy from what Stephanie and Chris already shared. But continuing to coach and support tier-one instruction of written wisdom math programs. We're piloting illustrative math, and feedback on that has been very good in my building. And then implementation of screeners, iReady is new. It is a robust, robust platform that we are still learning about, and DIBELS sustains. Committing to reviewing student work samples during monthly admin teaching and learning meetings using the Atlas Protocol. So this is something that Anne Marie shared with me over the summer. And it is really a succinct process for when we bring student work samples to the table, how we analyze student work, the questions that we ask, the patterns that we look for. And then how do we determine what our next steps are going to be around instructional practices? We have our next round of these actually tomorrow. And I think Chris mentioned the volume IAB. Fifth grade recently gave the volume IAB in math. And then all of our grades have given or are giving in the process of the literary text IAB, which is basically practice tests for S-Back. And I think sometimes it's important to remember, when we look at the S-Back data, at this point, we're talking about data that's six months old. It is important that it's from last May. So as we take these practice tests along the way, we have to do something with them. And so generating conversation with our teachers, with our specialists about what is this telling us right now? And what are we going to do about it now is very important. Continue to review standardized testing data from the spring. FIBELS, iReady scores focusing on CUSP-y kids and individual growth targets. We've talked about staffing. And to me, I always think about, you could go to any classroom teacher and say, who else could use support? And I think almost every classroom teacher would name a couple of kids that could use some extra support. It's hard to give extra support when you don't have a ton of people to do it. So, you know, we all want to help kids, but it's difficult to do that sometimes when you may not have the capacity to do so. And committing to three MTSS windows with progress monitoring and communication. We made the decision this year to extend our MTSS windows to match the trimester schedule because what we've been finding in recent years is when we're pausing instruction to progress monitor and we're pausing instruction to assess, 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 because we want to make adjustments, what we're actually doing is losing instructional time. So to extend the window, it gives us more time to actually work with the kids and not spend so much time testing them along the way, if that makes sense. The climate survey, I have to agree with a couple of things that Stephanie and Chris have already said. We put work into our trusted adult lessons a couple of years ago, and then we haven't done much with it since. And so we have flatlined. So now that we have a social worker back, that is an area of focus for us this year is to restart those lessons, TK through five. Very happy about the middle set of data opportunities for parental and caregiver involvement. And over to the right, a little bit of a fluctuation again. I actually always look at this closely to tease out certified versus non-certified. And consistently, year to year, it's the non-certified numbers that bring that down. I agree with what Denise has said about a shift in the PD so far this year. Having them face-to-face with trainers, with facilitators, and talking through situations that arise. I think it's important to remember, you know, our parent professionals are the ones that are with kids at lunch. They're with kids at recess. They're with kids during those unstructured times. And so being able to have someone in the building, an administrator, to walk them through and debrief those types of things that come up in schools, I think is really, really important.
Yeah, I hope so. I hope we can do better with the parent.
I...
This isn't just, this year problem, it's probably been many years.
Yeah, this is last year, and we've really made some adjustments. So hopefully, we'll see the results. And we can even bring you in between, like we do these surveys after each and every PD, and we're able to look at that carefully.
Action steps relative to these district priorities. We also have monthly assemblies, which are a huge hit. Parents come. We are now infusing musical performances from our string students and our band students into them to raise our arts theme, and that has gone over very well. Mrs. Miller and I have really started, along with some classroom teachers and our speech pathologists, to run lunch groups for kids to practice social skills, empathy, problem solving, and communication. For those of you that are familiar with the new school climate improvement mandates from the state, a lot of that is grounded in restorative practices. And so really, what we're trying to do with kids is help them develop these skills that are not innate in all of us. We start our trusted adult lessons, as I explained. We have quite a few parents that volunteer in our building. We run required mandatory volunteer training sessions every September. And we have about a dozen people, give or take, that volunteer in our building every year. They come back, they go through a bulleted checklist with Steph and I to just to review expectations. But we find that that's a great way for parents to spend a little bit of their time in the building, see things from a different perspective, but also feel like they're connected to our school. We communicate a lot over Parent Square. I know all of the buildings do that. And I think that that tool has been really, really great for all of Groton Public Schools. In terms of the SEL component, I forgot to put a couple of things here, and I apologize for that. But we did incorporate Second Step this year as our new SEL program. We, I think we're one of the last schools in the district to come on board with that. And that is going very well. That is a tier-one program that focuses on traits such as problem solving, such as communication, such as self-awareness and self-control, those type of things. We're doing push-in whole-class lessons based upon needs. Our second grade is, I would call it, behavior-heavy right now. So our school psychologist and our social worker are pushing into those classrooms over the next couple of weeks to infuse what's called the zones of regulation into those classrooms to help those kids sort of manage not just their emotions, but their interpersonal skills with others. This summer, I went to a school safety conference up in West Hartford, and I met a woman who paired us up with CHDI, another acronym for you. The Child Health and Development Institute, basically a state agency. And we've been working with them all year. We just completed the SHAPE assessment, which is a lengthy, I don't know about a two-hour process it took us to evaluate our needs as a building relative to behavior and SEL. And it's objectively done through an online system where you are reading a Likert scale and you're entering your self-scores. And we have a follow-up meeting tomorrow with them to determine next steps as a building. So we're really excited about that. And then circling back to the priority up top, they're going to be the ones that come in later this year to train our whole building, including our pairs, on restorative practices. Because there's only really about a handful of us in our building that have had the formal legitimate training, and we want to give that to everybody. Encourage no participation on our two main committees. Continue our assemblies. We have a group of first graders that last month started a student spirit committee. They came to Steph and I with a proposal, and we said, this is tremendous. And they came up with another proposal for the end of this week and Monday or Monday and Tuesday of next week. And that is just growing organically. They're coming into the office every day during lunch and recess. And our little student spirit committee is putting out flyers, and they're making invites. And it's just really, really cute.
What are your two main committees?
So we have our school improvement plan. And then we have our school climate. Our SIP and our skip. Our SIP and our skip. And between those two groups, we've got close to twenty-five people involved. Two big initiatives where we really said, instead of having a lot of these smaller committees, let's just put together two big groups, and please, you know, step up for one. And most people did. And then in terms of the student and staff engagement, continuing the school attendance board, periodic messages from the main office. I expect teachers to post at least one message per week to their families on Parent Square. And many of those are shared with me. And actually, it allows me to see parents responding to the teachers. And then there's a back and forth about an assignment, about something that's coming up. So I think that that tool, Parent Square, has been very helpful for parents to feel connected, but also have ease of communication with their teachers.
But when you are putting together a class, this would go for you, Chris, and Stephanie also, do you look at the composition of the students that are going to be in that class? Like, if you have a lot of behaviors?
Yes.
You don't, do you try to divvy them up? And then how does that work when new students come in?
If I showed you our spreadsheet for class placements, it's overwhelming. There's probably about ten to twelve different columns of information that we list for every child in terms of academics, in terms of behavior, in terms of high needs, in terms of adult support, in terms of teacher notes, DIBELS scores, S-Back scores. All of those things go in, and they build over time. We start that process probably in late April, early May. And then it's not finalized until the summer because kids come and go. And we try to create as balanced classes as we can going into the school year. When we get new kids, I know I don't get as many new students as others may get. A lot of what we look at is class size. We try to keep the class sizes balanced, but also what's the level of need in each of these rooms? And where might this child fit?
Anybody else want to jump in?
Kind of the same thing, though we, you know, we balance our classrooms for race and ethnicity, boys and girls, reading levels, math levels. As you mentioned, social ed, five oh fours. Students who have behaviors, students who are high teacher time. There are a lot of students who don't have behaviors, but take up a lot of teacher time. So, you know, there's just a lot of things that we look at. It's quite a puzzle. But we usually, we start around early April, before April break. And we usually are somewhat set by the end of school, and then kids start moving out. That we didn't know were moving out. And, you know, and we do a little reshuffling over the summer to finalize it. When kids come in, mostly we're looking at class size, trying to keep somewhat of a balance between boys and girls, whether or not they have special ed services or ELL services. Might mean one classroom has to go a little higher than others.
And I will say, something that has been very helpful for us is moving the magnet process up. So starting it in January, February, and having kids seated in their new school allows us to communicate because that first year, when all five of us became magnet schools, a lot of it was done over the summer. And we had to navigate the five of us. Where are these kids? And now it's just so much better. It allows us to put those kids into an appropriate classroom way in advance.
We were talking about that today because all the other magnet schools start doing that, like now.
Yeah.
And I said, maybe we can shift even closer to when the others, when Lauren is, you know, sending out theirs. Because I think, you know, we do want to draw some of our kids back. We have to watch that, you know. So, you know, and that might give you even a little more.
Yeah.
Questions, Ryan? Jen?
Not part of your presentation, but just over off, when Beverly and I came, so my... Do you have the numbers that are external? I'm not going to say where, like on the, like, when Beverly and I went there, they were looking to put numbers outside, external, in the building. And I was just wondering.
I'm thinking of students.
Yeah, yeah, no.
No, I don't.
You don't?
No, no.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
Sorry, I wasn't...
No, I'm trying not to say what it is because it might be... You don't have them yet either? Okay. And then, how about the doors, like being able to come in?
Also.
Okay, perfect.
And that went over very well with families last year.
Perfect. Thank you.
Yours too, although yours buzzes a little extra.
Well, it buzzes extra, and the handle doesn't pop up. So when they buzz a person to come into the office and they open the door, if they hold on to the handle and the buzzer stops, right, the connection stops, the handle stays in the open position. And so the door closes, and then whoever comes next can just open the door.
Oh, that's a problem. And having that problem fixed, it's Groton Mill right now, this week.
That's an ongoing issue, but it's because they didn't have the right transformer. They put our door in, and so they put in the transformer that they had. And I don't know if that causes the problem with the handle sticking, but that causes the awful noise.
Yeah, I know. I noticed that noise.
Ryan, what did you do last year that you're going to carry over this year that you thought worked wonderful?
Last year, Brad, was the first year that we incorporated the small group instruction time into our schedule. I can't say that it went wonderfully, but I will say that we created a lot of forward momentum last year with teachers understanding how to use data to plan instructional groupings. And that's one of the reasons why we decided to add time to that aspect this year. That's also the same time where our interventionists are pulling kids for math and/or reading support. We're putting a lot of onus on that forty-five-minute... We're putting a lot of onus on that 45-minute window of time every day. So I don't want to say it went wonderfully, but I'm encouraged by it.
We haven't seen your class sizes yet and I think that's something I was going to ask Susan to see. Are you all happy with your class sizes as they stand? This would be Adrianian questions, I'm going to jump in. Are you happy with your class sizes this year?
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, truthfully, the difference between 18 and 22 is huge. It really is. Three or four kids in an elementary classroom can make a big difference, so.
And you haven't had 18. Northeast tends to always have in the 20s.
Yeah. We have, we may have a 20 or a 21, but I've had 23s, I've had 24s and especially when those are older kids, that, that classroom fills up. It's noticeable when you walk in.
Cause so far this year, you're happy with?
Very much.
That's good.
Amy, you have any questions?
Yeah. So this came up before with Jen's question, so I'm just going to ask it of you. Last spring, I believe that we rolled out a maintenance tracker that they, or at least I thought a maintenance tracker was rolled out, that the school administrators had access to. So they can see all of the projects planned at their school and where they were on the list. Is that not the case?
We re, I've asked Erica to resend it out. We have one for safety and we have one for maintenance and they've all been tracked because I just pulled it up for Sam and I went over it, the things that had been accomplished but the things that were still outstanding. So I asked Erica to resend it out and then we created a third doc for maintenance, you know, I guess, maintenance and custodial cleanup things that you need over the summer, projects that you might need over the summer.
Yeah. In the past, let's go way back, West Greenleaf, when we would do the budget, we would, part of the budget process was always looking at, you know, what, we would put in requests to West of, you know, the grade two, three hallway needs to be painted, or this office needs to be painted, or the floor here needs to be fixed or whatever. And we haven't done that in several years. And it's starting to show that we're not continually working, you know, if we just paint a little bit all the time, it never really looks bad, but when you don't paint forever.
Looks bad.
Things start.
Yeah. And even some of our new schools need to keep up with that because their walls are not like the old walls. They're, you know, they're not cinder block.
And I think, I, I can only speak for myself, but sort of a couple of other people. When we got that Google Doc last year, I think there was a misunderstanding that it was like to gather data once and not so much that it was an ongoing process. Now we understand that it's an ongoing process with that Google.
But we had to resend it out. It has to come to the top of your Google closet, otherwise it gets lost.
So what would you suggest?
The Google closet is a mess.
Oh, yeah. I was just under the understanding that we had rolled out something that was going to be kind of a tracker where they could, where, where the administrators, maybe not all the classroom teachers had access to it, but the administrators would have access. And then it would be a kind of a live document. So something was done, cross it off the list, something else gets added somewhere on the list so you know, like if you're the teacher that's waiting for your classroom to be painted, there's some kind of a tracker on that so you don't just wait four years for it.
Yeah.
That's kind of what I thought was happening, but that, it seems like it started.
Now we understand that's what's happening.
And we just asked about that in facilities.
Yeah.
Cause we, we're like, well, what happened to that sheet that we had last year? Where is that and where are we? What do you suggest we do, Chris, about maintenance and to track?
All right.
Or Ryan, or Stephanie, oh, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Ryan, Stephanie.
You know, Chris is going to tell you.
Well, I think it's important that we do start looking at doing a little bit, you know, some of those maintenance things need to be done a little bit at a time.
Right.
So that it's not a huge.
Undertaking every.
A big undertaking and it's not such a big impact on your budget. And I think that that's what, whenever we got away from that, I can't remember the persons name.
Probably around COVID.
We've had other people in there and that's sort of when it stopped.
Cause even when I look at this building, when I walk the outside, I'm like, this building needs painting on the outside? I'm like, we really need to do some maintenance on the outside of the building to make it look a little nicer.
Yeah. And I just think when there's that steady plan, like in my budget, I always put in a plan for, you know, money to replace a certain number of teacher chairs or a certain number of student chairs or instructional tables because they break. You know, somebody pushes it across the carpet, the leg folds under and it's, and suddenly you're down. And a school looking nice means a lot to families.
Mm-hmm.
And it means a lot to students. It means a lot to walk into a classroom and all the furniture is matching. And I know that that sounds, you know, like, oh, it doesn't have to be that way. It makes a difference in the way that people and students perceive a classroom and perceive the environment. When you feel like your school is a special place and your classroom is a special place and it's not a hodgepodge of mismatched stuff that looks like we, you know, got what we could to put together a classroom, it makes a difference in how kids act and how they, and how they approach their day and how teachers feel about the environment that they're in. And so I think maintaining that is important.
When you get new furniture, do you, is there a way to test out the furniture to make sure that it's what you want, you know, or do you just get a catalog and say, okay, and hope for the best?
I can only speak to how I do it for my building. I use the specs from when our building was built for the furniture that was purchased for our building and I buy the same furniture that's already in my building so that everything matches.
I'm sorry.
My other question was just staffing, like for, like support staffing or, you know, how are you doing there? And are there any needs?
Very appreciative to have that second math tutor back. It just allows us to do a lot more in the math world. So we, I think similar to Chris, we have a three-person math team and a three-person reading team. And that includes a specialist on each of those teams. So would always love to have more, but right now I feel like we can make do with what we have. That, that math tutor is critical though. I would hate to see that position lost because we are, we're at a place where we're, we're using our specialists to support tier one instruction as well, particularly as we implement a possible new math program. It's hard for these people to do intervention and coach teachers at the same time, which is what I think Stephanie was saying earlier.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Mike?
Just a general one that came out when you mentioned staffing. I know a few years back, there was always a lot of vacancies in different positions because it's just hard to fill at the time. But it's gotten better, but I notice there are still a few vacancies. I think Charles Barnum may be a speech pathologist and he also a special education teacher. How do you, and those are new positions, how do you cope with that and, and I mean, what's that timeline to, to get someone in, in place to, to help with the, the school environment?
Stephanie was on top of that as soon as we knew we could secure the funds and post it.
You know, I walked into a building that needed to fill, I think, 12 paraprofessional positions and we did. And, you know, when I first heard them, like, I don't know how I'm going to do that, but we did and it actually happened pretty quickly. We are definitely struggling trying to fill the special education, special ed position at this point in time due to the time of the year. You know, a lot of people don't want to leave their district right now. We're hoping maybe during, hopefully we find something before Christmas break, but Christmas sometime, or winter break is sometimes a nice little time where people can sit down and actually start to put resumes together and applications together. We're definitely struggling with the speech language pathologist position, trying to fill that, that full-time one. I'm finding that I, a lot of my time is being spent in interviews and tracking down candidates. It's been tough. It's, yeah, it's been really tough. Taking up a lot of my time where I, I should be, you know, working on instruction and being in the classrooms is, is being spent trying to find people. I don't know if that answered your question or not.
We did have a final interview.
Yeah, we have the point six position filled. The candidate is waiting for certification. And then we have one of the special ed teacher positions filled. The candidate starts December 1st. So we're about halfway there.
Yeah. But not there yet.
A speech pathologist is always the tricky one. We've even had to go to learn and find, you know, other contractors to be able to fill some of those positions.
Right. The problem with the sub grant is you can't use a third-party contractor.
Thank you.
Anybody else want to jump in with that question?
It's difficult. It, it's very difficult. I think in general, from what I've seen, there are less people applying for jobs than you would have seen eight to 10 years ago. And that's across the board. So you're, you're starting off with fewer people in the pot than you would have, in my opinion, 10 years ago. So it's always great when you can get a building sub that is close to certified or has a certification but doesn't want a full-time classroom yet because they just had a baby or they just moved to the area. When you're able to find those people, that's, that's a diamond in the rough, but they, that doesn't happen very often. So it's really hard to fill those positions when the, when the needs arise.
We have had some good luck with our teachers and residents, our interns and interns at UConn Avery Point in special education and sciences and so, and they've really turned out to be great success stories. They kind of happened in, have gotten that good training from our teachers and then have, we've been able to hire them, many of them. So that part is good.
Yes, I agree.
Thank you. And actually brought up building subs. When budget time comes around, and that's, that's a question that I want to be asking, do building subs, they're, they're to provide continuity when, when the regular teachers are absent or can't be there on a professional development or whatever. Do we have enough, I guess, building subs? It seems like it's a two to three or maybe three to four per elementary school. I was trying, I don't need an answer for that now, but like come budget time, that's an open question I have.
Any other questions? Anybody online have any questions? Nope. Well, thank you very much. This was a place conversation.
This is very comprehensive. Thank you.
We appreciate you coming every year. Well, Stephanie, this is your friend. Please come back. Thank you.
Thank you guys.
Thank you.
And Jen and I will probably come by and visit some, and bang, school.
Yeah.
So probably see you at some point.
Always welcome.
Makes someone else go first.
Yeah, right? Probably just throw them the walls.
I can write a note. I can write a note, like, Stephanie can't go across six feet. Location.
You gave us a lot of good things to talk about and a lot of information.
Thank you, everyone.
Bye, Ryan. Nice job.
Thank you. We might have made it. They travel home, Chris, once the purpose goes.
Thank you.
I'll get there before nine thirty. Where do you live? Oh, well, go, go.
About 15 minutes away.
What town do you live in?
No, 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 no.
It's all recorded.
I got some new ones here, Chris.
I like that jacket too, Chris.
Oh, thank you.
Used to call it a duck fly. I don't know what they call it now.
I don't know.
All right. Next item on the agenda is the Office of Childhood Grant, attachment number three. And is this part of it?
No, this is just a little flyer that kind of makes it easier to look at.
Yeah.
Okay. Can you make sure that the board members that are here get this somehow?
Yes. Will you send it to Joyce for us?
All right. So thank you, everybody. We, Karen, Susan and Shannon and I are going to present our Early Childhood Program Expansion and Enhancement Proposal. And we're going to start out with just a review of how the plan that we're going to present to you tonight aligns with our strategic plan. So our plan aligns with pillar two, cultivating a rich and vibrant learning community, and pillar three, it strengthens pathways that develop, oh, for secondary readiness. That's an error. Should be accelerate academic achievement.
But actually, if we get them started really early.
Yeah.
I don't know what that's called there.
They could do both.
If our data keeps growing like that.
All right. So Shannon is going to go next with information on the Smart Start Grant.
So, yeah, so part of what prompted this plan was an incredible funding opportunity through the state of Connecticut. So in June, the state legislature created an endowment for early childhood. And that was partly from the $300 million surplus from last year. So they created this endowment fund and for this first year, there's approximately $36 million for districts to expand and enhance their early childhood program. And as an endowment, the idea is that there'll be a continuous funding stream for years to come.
Which sounded really nice.
Yeah. So, so this is being managed through the Office of Early Childhood, which Denise might know the answer to this. I'm not aware, like, does our school readiness grant, was that through the Office of Early Childhood?
Yes.
Okay. So it was a new agency for me to work with, but we've worked with it for a while now. But, so, yeah, so the, the funding opportunity was announced this summer and we applied for it in August and we were notified in September that we were one of the districts that were selected. We could apply for up to 70, we could apply for both operating expenses and for capital improvements, which is really unique. I mean, that's, we don't often have that opportunity to apply for capital funds. So we could apply for up to, originally it was $100,000 per classroom, but then they, I think because of all the interest, they brought it back to $75,000 per classroom. But it sounds like the committee that's been formed to manage these funds is still deciding whether they're going to bring it back up to 100,000 or not for next year. So it's been a little challenging because, I mean, the office, everyone's very excited about this funding opportunity, but the Office of Early Childhood has been a little bit vague in when the funding is going to become available and what the future funding looks like. I mean, it's an endowment, so there's more or less guaranteed funding, but exactly how that's going to be rolled out, they've been a little bit vague on that just because I think they're still waiting on information from the committee. But the purpose is to create like a long-term grant program for districts to help support the expansion of early childhood services.
Along with, along with the expansion of slots in the community.
Yes.
So you might have heard.
And community.
Right. You might have heard last week that the governor is opening 1,000 seats in childcare programs throughout the state. So this is really aligned with the governor's vision to provide early childhood slots in the community and in the school district.
Yeah.
I heard that at my heart.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I think that pretty much provides an overview of the So I think that pretty much provides an overview of the, the grant. And Denise and Karen are going to talk about the vision that we've been talking about here within Groton.
Thank you, Shannon.
Do you have a question?
No.
I just have a, a quick one.
Sure.
But on that, so you mentioned it can support capital improvements and then, then the operational ones. The capital improvements part, we always talk about at budget time, the minimum budget requirement. I would think the capital funds would, would not fall into that because it'd be like any other capital improvement project. It'd be outside of our operating budget. But then the second part with that operating funds, if we choose to do that part, is, is that something that falls within our budget that we submit to the town for approval and go through all that process? Is it something outside of that that eventually we would be transitioning over? I'm just wondering how, if I'm maybe right about the capital funds and then I'm more concerned about that operational part, how that transitions budget-wise.
Yeah. I can't answer the question about how the capital funds gets accounted for within our budget. I don't know if you know that or if that is a difference.
Well, they would be outside of our budget additional. And it's really startup cost to, like, our vision is to have it at Mary Morrison, so there's some work to be done. Though in talking to Clint, he's looking at technology, for instance, to revitalize these classrooms. So that's part of capital, you know, so it's, you know, going to be a project that would help us resurrect Mary Morrison, which is really a very promising possibility.
I agree with that. So I think, I think that part's probably outside of what would fold into the minimum budget requirement, you know, or, but I'm wondering about that operational part. If, yeah, that grant is kind of parallel to what we approve through the town for now, would it come in? If you don't have the answers to that, that's absolutely fine.
Yeah, we'll have to ask that question specifically.
But that's one question.
Well, I think, I think that's why Shannon was indicating that it's, right now, it's a little tough getting information from the state because there's funds in the endowment, but they're still determining what the long-term awards will be. Right now, we know for two years, if the board agrees with this plan, we have funding for two years, this year and next year. And I think Shannon indicated that there is additional funding beyond year two, but right now they're not providing any specific information.
Yeah. Thank you. I just wanted to raise that question at this point.
It was a good question.
Not expecting the, the answer.
This, this idea actually came up when, when Anne Marie joined us because in East Hartford, this is exactly how they rolled out their program. They took an old school. They got capital funds, they got operational funds, and the first start, what is this called? The Smart Start?
Smart Start.
Got them going. But then the other capital, you know, improvements or the other improvements continued the program for a decade, you know, so.
Yeah.
So when they continued their, their program, that had to go into the board's budget?
No, I think they continued to get grants to support the program.
Oh.
Yeah.
So was ever a cost to their board?
There might be some costs to the board.
Some, some costs, probably. And we already have a preschool program, so this is really enhancing our preschool program. So we already have money in our operation budget for this, but this would be, enable us to expand it and make it even better and maybe open our doors to more students.
Right. So Karen's going to talk about phase one and then I'll talk about phases two and three.
So, yeah, Susan did a great job. I mean, really, that is what phase one is all about, is expanding and enhancing our already kind of existing programs. And, I mean, our goal is to, the Smart Start Grant is to provide all four-year-old preschoolers with academic and social readiness skills and a full-day program at Mary Morrison that would start, obviously, next year. But I'll kind of go through what it looks like, and I know I came and did this last year, so I won't lie for you guys. But right now, we have six half-day integrated preschool classrooms. We are, our idea is that four of those next year would move once we restore Mary Morrison to Mary Morrison and become full-day classroom, classes. Right now, they're half-day programs, so we, that's our goal, is to make them full-day. Part of the grant, you'll see with the 50/50 model, our integrated preschool right now is 50/50, 50% students that we call my preschool peers have strong skills. The other 50% need some kind of, you know, special education services or support. They, and I mean, I think there's some little room here too. And again, this is kind of where I think everyone's very excited about this, but we don't have all the answers yet about the grant, but moving to more of a 30/70 model, so 70%, it's kind of just expanding the amount of peers and, you know, special education students that can be in the classroom, which is nice, actually. So it would be 30% kind of the students with VIPs and then 70% that might not need that support. I think Denise is going to talk about this, but we do have this kind of bubble of students right now that, you know, are not qualifying for the programs and like that, the 30/70 would really increase the kids that would, would qualify or meet the criteria. So ultimately, it would just help more students be available for the program.
And one of the things I have to say is, to me, I saw this equity issue, you know, even when we started with TK pre-K, because those were the children who were the BRR babies, so they were that certain age range when the age changed for the state. And we wanted to provide them an education, a full-day education, to prepare them for kindergarten. And then I said, well, why couldn't we do this for all kids? And then our special needs kids were still in the half-day programs at the same age. And I said, they need to also have this full-day program. So in thinking equity for all of our four-year-olds to start with, you know, could be because they're four, they're a little older than three-year-olds and maybe they can sustain a full day, you know, we just thought this would be really a good way to get it going and then start to think about the three-year-olds and what we're doing with them. And then we really looked at the themes and Mystic, and we got some feedback from a teacher that her whole team from Mystic River wants to come. So, you know, we're thinking the three classes, then that's where we've seen the shift. I think the original plan that we sent you, this is tweaked a little bit.
Yes, yeah. There are, there are definitely some edits.
My name is, it says two classes.
Yeah, we've, we've been, we've been working, we've been burning the midnight oil on this. So the most current model that is, and, you know, as Susan said, they advocate for keeping the team together, which is, and it's a wonderful team. They collaborate really nicely. And the Thames one does too, obviously, but for Mystic River, taking all of them, would be the three classes and then taking one from Thames River and then kind of creating a new class there. Right now, just, oh, so right now, because you'll talk about kind of the differences of, we cap it at 18 children per class and transportation's provided. And they're not currently getting attending specials or school meals provided, so you'll see that in Denise's, that those would be added as well. As far as the PK, TK classrooms, this is like kind of the merge that we did this year with the pre, we used to have pre-kindergarten half-day sessions, two of them, one in Thames and one in Mystic. This year, we merged them into the transitional kindergarten curriculum and they all are full-day now. And we have four, at the very end of the summer, we had to add one at Northeast Academy, which was wonderful, and everyone was really supportive of that. So right now, we have two PK-TK classrooms at Thames, one at Mystic and one at NEA. And basically, their program components would stay the same next year for those four classes, but they would move to Mary Morrison next year.
So that's our current configuration with the integrated preschool and the pre-K-TK. And then phase two would be to increase the number of integrated preschool program slots for four-year-olds who would be eligible for kindergarten the following year at Mary Morrison Elementary School. So we'd like to use Mary Morrison in the grant to increase slots for the four-year-olds. So that would require four classes of integrated preschool. These are the classes right now that are 50/50, to move to Mary Morrison. And they would be the four-year-olds, students eligible for kindergarten the following year. They would meet the grant requirements because instead of being half-day programs, they would be full-day classrooms. So they would have a full day of school. The enrollment would be capped at 15, possibly 18.
Yep, 15 to 18, I think they were saying.
Yep. Transportation would continue to be provided. They would attend specials classes, whereas right now they're not because the program is so short. They're here for two and a half hours. I think it's two hours and 25 minutes right now. So we, we just don't have the time to transition, you know, and, and attend specials. And right now, they're not, you know, getting school lunch because they're only half-day. So they would get school meals.
There will be a difference between the pre-K-TK, which is taught by teachers who are pre-K certified, but they might not have a special education degree. And the ones that are in the preschool that do have special needs children, they have to have a special ed certification. So we have half of them, four of them, that do have that, you know, certification, which you would need for this class. And then the other four just don't. So, you know, in the future, it could be that, you know, we try to get that certification across the board so that we'll have more flexibility.
Right. We would continue having classroom para educator support, you know, obviously for the classroom and then for individual students as needed. And then one of the reasons why you, you can tell there's been changes from the presentation that we sent home Friday is because we got some feedback from the teachers. Originally, we were thinking the four classes at Mary Morrison would be two from Mystic River, two from Thames, or maybe two from Mystic River, one from Thames and a new teacher hire. Well, we heard from the teachers that they really don't want to see their preschool teams split. They would rather one school go one year and all of the three classrooms move, and then the following year, three classrooms from another school move. So basically, it would be potentially three integrated preschool classrooms right now from Mystic River would go to Mary Morrison, so they could be together as a team. They feel that they've developed a lot of collaboration, teamwork, support, and they really want to go as a team.
They're excited about this. This, this has been kind of always, we wanted to keep that school, we wanted to be able to bring it back, and we have always talked about it as an early childhood center, and they've known about that. So they, they're kind of excited about it. But I liked, you know, it's, we need to listen to our teachers. So when they reach out to us, you know, we'll listen.
Right. So there would still be, with this model, there would still be three classrooms of integrated preschool at Thames River that would service mostly three-year-olds, and we'd like to see mostly four-year-olds at Mary Morrison. So that would, next year would kind of be a transition year because we would still have three preschools at Thames River for one more year. So it would be a gradual phase in.
And still have sessions.
As we prepare the building. So we need to be very cautious and make sure that we have enough classrooms ready using the, the capital funds to refurbish them.
And who's going to be doing the work on these classrooms? Is Sam in his booth?
We've had Sam. Sam's done many walkthroughs with us, so he's aware of the work that needs to be done. I don't necessarily know who he has earmarked to complete it, but he's aware of the work that needs to be done.
Okay, once I think of the facilities.
Yeah.
A lot of the work, to be honest, is painting, a lot of painting, cleaning of some of the carpets, and really the sink areas in the classrooms. Some of the doors are, you know, kind of loose on the sinks, but the tile floors look good. There is some work that needs to be done in some of the student bathrooms. Not all of the classrooms have a bathroom in the classroom, but I think six do. So there, there is some work to be done on the student bathrooms.
And the little playground that's out there.
And the playground needs some TLC.
And there's a couple of classrooms that need to be emptied out. They got a lot of stuff in them.
They do.
So I'm just wanting to see him to do that and do the work that he hasn't done already. But that's the same question.
That's the same question. We'll, we'll write it down.
Yeah, I was wondering, what was the total amount for the, the capital improvements? I missed that.
Yeah, it's $75,000 per classroom.
So we have.
That's operating.
No, for each. So $75,000 for capital improvement for five.
For six classrooms?
Yeah, so $600,000.
All right. So that's, and, and we're trying to get that work done to start.
For next year.
To, to me, that scopes out, like, someone would have to be hired to that. Seems like hard to do internally. And then we might typically need to be a, a big process. It seems, it seems like, it seems like it's a tight schedule. It sounds like you might need to use it in that time, or does the state say it has to use?
No, we need to use it in that time.
Okay. So it's gone right over to your committee, isn't it?
Mary Morrison is open right now.
Hey Ben, I've had my hand put a little bit here now.
Okay, just hold on. Hold on, I'll get to it.
Everyone else is behind, so.
Okay, just hold on, I'll get to Ian. Hold on. Go ahead, Jen.
Oh, everyone, no one else waiting?
Go ahead, Jen. Just ignore Ian and go ahead.
All right. So, I mean, also to add to the.
Ian, 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 I asked him to turn your mic off if you continue to talk. It's Jay's turn.
All right.
Mark, can you turn this mic off for me and you, Ian? Go ahead, Jen.
I'm leaving myself, thank you.
Thank you for doing that. Go ahead, Jen.
So when we went to Mary Morrison, right, like, I thought there were only, like, is the vision only the four classrooms on the right-hand side of the building or are you going to use the entire back? So that's question one. And then question two, what's going to happen to Ernie and his team who's currently utilizing the kitchen right now to support the entire district from there?
Right.
And the treehouse people?
And the treehouse people in the front. And if the fire marshal could not allow robotics to get to the fire safety concerns and sprinkler system, what are we doing about that? Because now we're dealing with young children.
Right.
In there. So those are, that's my four questions.
So we have no plans on disrupting food services or treehouse.
Okay.
We're happy that they're there and we think they'll make great partners with us. Every meeting we've had there, Ernie has fed us, so we have no problem.
Happy to feed the kids.
He relates with food services and we love treehouse. And ECAT is there right now. So we have our early child assessment team there right now. So that's to answer that question. And then the classrooms we're looking at are the first four classrooms.
On the right.
On the right, because they're preschool classrooms with the bathroom in the room.
Yes.
And then going up the stairs.
Yep.
There's two classrooms behind the stage.
Yep.
That have bathrooms in them and they're quite large. And then we're looking at going down the hall.
Got it.
Because there's classroom, or, I'm sorry, there's bathrooms. Those classrooms don't have bathrooms in them.
Across.
They're right across the hall.
Okay.
Yes. And there's some nice smaller offices there that would make a nice OT room, speech room, nurse's office, things of that nature.
And then the library media center would be a nice welcome center, and we're going to get to that part. But I'll let Ian have his turn before I say anything more.
Your second?
I'm sorry, your third question about the fire marshal. Sam is planning, I believe, to do a walkthrough with the fire marshal.
Yeah, that's.
That's on his to-do list.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, Ian, your turn.
All right. So I definitely share the concerns of most of my colleagues are very spoken and as far as that goes, you know, yeah, the fire marshal, I believe, and official ruling on that because I'm concerned that this building is in the process of being mothballed and we're retracting the use of it. And now it seems like we're repopulating at a faster clip without making major investments in rehabbing the infrastructure. And, and, you know, there's parking concerns, there were, you know, the, well, have we tested the waters? They're planning to test the water. Let me ask that. And I'll, I'll reserve my time for further questions.
We brought in an early childhood specialist from the State Department of Education who did a walkthrough with us, and she's given us a lot of good, high-quality mapping to go through just that process, Ian. So all the checklists that would be required for testing and Sam was in the walk too. So we did get a lot of good guidance with that because we thought the same thing.
Can you share that with the board?
Sure. Yep.
Go ahead, Ian.
Oh, Ian, how about the security systems and all that too, the checklist?
Yes, yeah.
All right. So Ian, I heard that we could have the checklist sent to us to be fair. All right, so Ian, I heard that we could have the checklist sent to us to verify everything is being done?
Okay.
That's correct.
That's right. Yep.
Yeah, so, yeah, I just, I look forward, I would just want to reiterate what Mike said as far as this may exceed the capacity of our staff to do in the timeline that is being presented here. And so this, we may need to look at outside contractors to, in order to facilitate this being done in time of fashion. Thank you.
Okay, and then, one more slide. Phase three would be obviously to bring over those other preschool classrooms from Thames River. But what we'd also like to do is to improve family engagement. Through the development of the welcome center at Mary Morrison. So we'd like to, you know, work with our registration team and see if we can maybe have, you know, certain departments move to Mary Morrison, like registration, and any other group that would help us welcome families to the district and provide an orientation and an entry to the district at Mary Morrison.
This is something, a model that we saw in New London, and the staff came back very excited. I think you were on that, Shannon and Rebecca Beas and a few other people.
Maury.
Maury.
Yep. It wouldn't really take much to move registration. I mean, they would really just use one room. And, you know, so, and we were actually eyeing, there's a classroom on the main wing that's carpeted that has an exterior door close to that classroom. So we thought that might be a nice place for registration, but that's obviously down the road. And that's it?
All right, thank you. So busing, is there going to be additional busing that's not covered in our current contract?
Well, if we expand the classrooms, there would be. So if we expand from the classrooms that we currently have, then there would be. But we're really looking at the ratio of students with IEPs to students with disabilities. The whole goal of the program is to, one, increase the session from half-day to full-day. That's the expansion. And also to reduce the number of special ed students to gen ed students. So we know that students with an IEP are going to get a slot because it's a mandated program when they have an IEP. But the state is looking to expand seats for other students as well. So all their three and four and maybe five-year-olds, if they turn five while they're with us, we're looking to increase opportunities for them to have early childhood spots in our school district.
And already, we've reduced the need to have those midday runs, which would really be a cost savings that might help offset bringing more kids in, you know. But a lot of times, those four-year-olds, they just ride the bus with siblings, so they're kind of in the same neighborhood. So that's not such a.
Well, the nice thing about Mary Morrison that the teachers were sharing with us today is that when they worked at Mary Morrison, they said that there were a lot of families that walked, that walked from Navy Housing over to Mary Morrison. So they did have quite a few walkers.
Yeah.
So that's a possibility, too.
So what's the, when is this, when is the, when will we file the application for?
So the application's been filed. It was provisionally approved. But now we've been informed that we can expect to see the funds pretty soon. They're in the process of getting ready to place them into EGMS. So we've been approved for this funding.
It's nearly a million dollars.
Yep. To accept that.
How much was it?
Nearly a million dollars.
So, yeah, we've been approved for six hundred thousand for the capital improvements for this year, and then six hundred thousand for operating expenses for next year.
More than a million.
Yeah, I guess if you combine those two.
Yeah, one point two.
So because we had approved, that means we have to go forward with this?
Though we can reject it if we want to.
We have to go through the process. The board has to accept this, yeah.
It's up to you to accept that.
Oh, okay, so we don't have to accept the money. We don't have to. I'm just saying technically.
I guess it leads into my next question. Do we have a full budget for this project that the board could look at? So all of the expenses that we project this is going to cost, including like facilities modifications. Maybe if they're spending money to renovate classrooms, does that include the playground? Or are we going to have to spend money on the playground? Is the parking lot going to need work? Because I feel like that might not be, or at least parts of it, might not be ADA. And so I would personally, before the board votes on this, know what the full budget is and what the alleyway, you know, how much the state is going to give us. So we can kind of evaluate, and then we can make a decision, you know, how far we go on that.
I just wanted to mention two more things that haven't been brought up yet. Just to keep in mind with votes coming in over the next couple of years, this is, again, an opportunity for us to, you know, at least provide some flex space. And just to be aware, I mean, I'm sure you probably know this already, but other districts are taking advantage of this funding, including Learn, which is like rapidly expanding their early childhood programs. And my understanding is we already have parents who are like traveling over to Waterford to take advantage of these programs.
We do.
So it just kind of reminds me a little bit of the situation that we were in like a decade ago when some of the surrounding districts were really expanding their magnet programs. And then it kind of took us a couple of years to realize we.
We lost a lot of kids and we were paying millions of dollars.
My only concern would be like, I'm not against the program. But we're trying to do the manufacturing center, and then we're doing this. Are we doing a lot at the same time, you know? You know, this seems a lot. Let me jump onto Ian. Go ahead, Ian.
Thank you. Yeah, I just want to express my support for like what Adrian was saying as far as asking for a fully articulated budget for this project. It says it all really good. I'm all in support of it as well. But, you know, I just want to be able to see the game plan all at once prior to making the commitment. It's enough that it's achievable, and that we have, you know, a good bit of the basis covered, or at least anticipated for. And I also agree with that concern, but, you know, we are doing a lot in a small amount of time. There's a lot going on here, so we need to be, you know, mindful and intentional.
Yeah, unfortunately, the capital.
One thing I would just like to ask the board is, you know, can we have a consensus that we want to see an articulated budget that, you know, projects this?
Oh, yeah. That goes without saying.
Yeah.
You can't move forward without seeing the budget.
And we've already been working on that, so not to worry.
Is that something that we could see along with the checklist of the upgrades and?
Yep.
I would move forward if I didn't see a budget.
Well, we've also been.
When do you expect to see those documents?
Okay. We've also been crunching numbers for environment.
You're asking for a date. I'm asking for a date, please.
Sure, I'm just, I'm just trying.
I'll get back to you on that, Ian. I've got to look at all the things you're asking for. Start accumulating. That means we have to meet this week and pull all that information together. And then I think Denise has.
You didn't just say that, that you're already in the process of constructing this thing?
We've been.
And the checklist, your checklist was sent to you, possibly.
Yes. I have to just gather all of those pieces together to get them to you.
About one week, two weeks?
No, I can get them within a week.
Within a week?
Yep.
Okay, so then, that could be brought in for our next town meeting?
Our next Cal meeting?
Watch out for Thanksgiving, just.
We're only until December, because we don't have another Cal meeting until December.
Yeah, the next meeting's a regular board meeting?
Yeah, we have a regular board meeting next week.
Yeah, we've been working on that, Ian, and that's why some of the slides, and we apologize for some of the slides on the presentation changing. But we've been gathering a lot of information and really looking at a moment, looking at the grant, doing walkthroughs at Mary Morrison, working with our consultant at Burn, talking to some of our teachers. So we're trying to get a lot done in a short window of time, but we will definitely get that to you.
Did you have that already by the next Cal meeting, which I think is December 8th?
I think so. Absolutely. I mean, I could even get it ahead of time to you to take a look at.
Well, we need it ahead of time to take, ahead of, we need it ahead of time to take a look at it before the next Cal meeting. Exactly what I meant. Put you on the Cal meeting. Hold tight, hold tight, hold tight, Ian. Hold tight. So, hold tight, Ian. Hold tight. So we'll put you on the Cal meeting on December 8th.
Perfect.
Go ahead, Ian.
All right, thank you. Yeah, and I appreciate all that for December 8th. Looking forward to it. And just, yeah, moving forward, it'd be great to make that kind of standard process as far as like having the financials and the timeline and all kind of part of this package at this moment. Or even more ahead of time, moving forward in the future. Thank you.
You're welcome.
What he's saying is we don't want drips and drabs.
Just two things. One is the process. I think because this is a grant and we'll have to approve it, I think I'll then have to go to town council and the RTM. And so there's a certain amount of, like, you know, that builds in a certain amount of process time there, right? Like a couple of months at least, so something to be aware of. My other part was, I think, you know, that ultimately going to that full year, full day program is going to make such a huge difference in terms of just ease of kids being able to be in this program. And then the contact time obviously will help, too. And this could be something that sort of launches us forward, that you can track through the school system, right?
Because you heard from Ryan, and all those kids in TK did, on the dibs and the IED.
Well, and that's what this board has been saying. You guys, I mean, I'm taking your lead, because you've been saying if what we can do is bolster. And we know early childhood is where you got to start. And bolster them from the beginning, giving them that Hagerdy, giving them that early literacy and numeracy, and a full day of it. To me, it's just, it's a win-win. But it's a lot of planning. But I'm up for it. I can do it.
But you get to see how much money it's going to cost, too.
And it's great that the state and the governor are behind that, behind this now. I think it's our school district with the challenges. We need to be at the forefront of this, too. My last question is, in terms of the budget, could, do we have to spend these funds at Mary Morrison? Or if we find out that the timing of that gets too tough to do, could we spend this at the existing pre-K classrooms in the different schools? Like, are we locked into the Mary Morrison site where we have to spend all these funds? Or could we, in the meantime, you know, renovate, you know, the existing classrooms, per se?
My answer would be, we would love to use these funds in our existing buildings, but we have a space issue.
We do. In all of our buildings, there's no more rooms.
But we do, we do currently have these classrooms.
But we don't have the capacity to move them to full day.
That'd be like year two or three, when that funding's uncertain. I'm just, I'm just looking for like a possible Plan B, because I don't want to sacrifice all these funds, but still.
I know.
You know, this is, this is more than aspirational, because you're planning it clearly. But to have a fallback plan.
Well, this is why.
Because it's a short timeline to use the funds. That's my concern.
And this is why, this is why we wanted to come to you tonight, because we wanted to share this global vision with you, because we do need to make some decisions in terms of how we're going to move forward.
And then along with that's kind of with the budget, the sort of the operational flow chart or plan for that, because you mentioned nurse's office, that would be nurses. Maybe not new administrators, but some administrators that are here within the system now would be at that location, maybe.
And we think some of this, you'll see when we submit our budget. We think some of the staff might be able to be part-time. So for example, potentially a part-time speech pathologist, potentially, you know, administrator slash teacher leader. So we're trying to be creative and look at all of the positions and be as, you know, as fiscally responsible with the grant funds as we can be.
Right. Thank you. I'm both optimistic and apprehensive.
Yeah. Welcome to my world. The youngest learner to the oldest learner, how am I going to get this done?
Yeah, we think that a study and could be part-time, things of that nature.
Ian, you have something else?
Yeah, just one last comment on this, all right. This is just also, I think, another great case in point. I mean, I appreciate the global vision, and just for the record, I am in full support of the idea of this. Full support of the TK, pre-K, all the programming. But, you know, this board, a number of us on this board have asked in the past, and one of the things we're looking at is like, how can the board be involved in the seeking of grants? And also, like, to tie back to Denise's comment about the global vision. It'd be great to be brought in on that and say, okay, well, these, these grants out here, these are what we're looking to do with them, and this is sort of our anticipated timelines and financials for them if we're able to secure them. Having the board brought in earlier on this, like, this always, this feels like another situation where it's sort of a full-court press in the fourth quarter. And I'd rather feel more like, you know, we're also pre-gaming as well as there throughout the whole process. You know, even just updates and overall guidance, consulting, advice, and all that stuff as far as like, you know, what grants we're seeking and for what purpose.
This one came really last minute, Ian, but I have been talking about it, and I put it in board notes. I've got about three different versions in board notes. So we have, it kind of came to us. When did you start this summer? We found it. And we brought it to everybody's attention.
It was approved by the legislature in June. We were made aware of the potential opportunity in July. We submitted our application in mid-August. I think we had about a week's turnaround time. And we didn't know if we would be awarded or selected or not. And then we were given a, you know, like a notification in mid-September. We participated in a couple of webinars. And I think we updated the board throughout that time in board notes. We really provided all the information that's been provided to us.
I must have appreciated. Yeah, and, you know, my concern is kind of circling back to the back of the building. Was done, what we, in the process of mothballed. You know, my, my children were there, you know, in their elementary years. And so it was definitely aged and aging badly then. So, you know, in my mind, it just seems like it's a very steeped field of time in a short amount of time. But I do appreciate all the efforts and I hope. One last question, I guess. The town, have we notified the town council? I mean, beyond just us doing this casually through the meeting. Have we notified the town council that we're increasing usage of this building?
Well, we always kept this building. This building is, belongs to Granton Public Schools. We never gave it back for this reason.
But there was some talk about, you know, the, you know, or maybe even we have heard. Then there's also the talk of the playground, the park.
Yep.
So it seemed at the time like, you know, the town was under the perception of like Mary Morrison was in a steady state, used just in a sort of minimal capacity.
Well, we do have the MOU provided that Dean has worked on with Floyd and John Burt. So John is aware that, you know, we've always kept that for the use of preschool, should that come.
Thank you for bringing that up for you. So that, yeah, that's coming before us, too, right?
Yep. Yep. That was, I think that's completed. I think so. I think Dean helped us with that.
Right. So that draft, is that something we'll be reviewing soon in the near future as well, maybe on December 8th?
Yeah, I'll make sure you get the draft, the final draft. Let's call it the final draft.
No, it was not the final draft.
Did you run out of power, too?
Well, okay. We'll call it.
All right, okay.
All right.
Semantics here. Okay. But we talked about Mary Morrison a while ago. You, people came and talked to us.
Yeah, we've been talking about it.
We've been talking about using Mary Morrison. This isn't the first time. Yeah, the grant's new, but.
And it came in a hurry.
Your mics are off.
Thank you.
I wanted to say that I am supportive of this, even though I have questions. So please know that. I think this is going to be great for our community. One thing that I would like to see is some data on improved educational outcomes, especially for underserved kids. Because I feel like we're going to have to go to the town and say, this is what we want to do. It would be great to have some data to back up the why we want to do it. I mean, and, you know, Seth had some great data from. I mean, and, you know, Seth had some great data from eight, eight students, but hopefully we can get more than that. Orion, I'm sorry. Well data there. But they, so I just wanted to kind of make that, that statement. And then I appreciate the board notes, but they are not deliberative. So, they are not the same as discussing things.
No, you're right. It's much better to talk about it.
You know, that's just a, that's just an informative.
Yep.
In this, I, I am a little bit concerned about the schedule. And, and, you know, I mean, this being in November, we've got holidays coming up where, you know, if the board were involved earlier on, maybe we could have come up with some of these questions and had a little bit more in the planning. Although I know we didn't know we were going to get the money until recently.
Right.
You know, we could have at least, at least I'll speak for myself, I could have at least been thinking about this and kind of getting my head around it rather than, than that just happening in the second part of November. But I appreciate all the work that's been done towards this and I look forward to it.
Go ahead, Ian.
Janet, when do you need us to respond so that you can accept the funding? Because I know we're asking you to provide a lot of data, but you also need to respond back. So, what is that, Dean?
I think they've already, yeah, they've already
I think they're assuming we're going to
Yeah, why wouldn't they, right?
So, at this point, it would be, I think, saying that our board has decided that they don't want to move ahead with this and we are going to
Lose that chance.
Turn the funds or lose the, pass on this opportunity.
Yeah, which would be, no.
You never know if it comes around again.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know. One point two more, you know, who's going to drop that?
But I can get you the research. We were just talking about that at the superintendents meeting. UConn has done a lot of research with the superintendents, and that's one of the early childhood. So, I'll gather those together.
And we do have some like district-specific data. With, Ryan was talking about like the dibble scores. That's a relatively new assessment that they're using. So, we won't have like historical data for that. But we do have some like braggance data and things like that.
Oh, we do have a lot of that.
Yeah, but we're, we're just success stories in other districts like that. That, that might be helpful.
Some of the, some of the other magnet programs that are drawing a lot of our kids too. Have had some good success stories.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And looking forward to seeing you.
You're sure?
Yeah.
She has a few more. She's been working hard. We'll be back.
It's pretty quick.
You have to stay longer because of your, your brain.
Okay, now we're doing an update on grants, attachment number four.
And Shannon usually brings us this three times a year, usually, typically.
Yeah.
So, we take a look at
Yeah. Yep. So, I was here last
Thank you, Karen. Thank you, Denise. Safe travels.
So, yeah, the last time I, I gave an overall update was in July. So, this is what we've received up to this date. So, it's, I guess you could say a smaller list compared
Is it a way that projected on the screen?
Yeah.
She just left.
Mark, does Mark have a check?
No, I had, Mark does have this attachment.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, thank you, Mark.
It's in the agenda.
Yep. Attachment number four.
Oh, great.
Yeah, it's in the agenda.
I've got a question I can ask while we wait.
Yeah.
On the, on the district website, we've got the finances office website, and they've got grants. And it's the grants that are, I think the categorical grants. Could we post this there?
No.
Why?
Because I don't think we want to post our competitive grants.
It, why not? It's public.
Because they're competitive, and I don't think we necessarily
This spreadsheet, just, just the numbers, just, just what we have.
I would advise against it, but that's your call.
Interesting.
Thank you, Mark.
We brag about ours.
We are going to put something, though, in the board budget book. We've talked about that to show both categorical, we've done that in the past, and competitive grants. So, to your point, Mike, it'll be in the budget book this year because we think you do need to showcase that.
Oh, I, I think it should be highlighted. These are wonderful successes.
I would like to highlight our partnerships and, you know, talk about what is being funded, but not necessarily the amount that's being funded. Partly to encourage other organizations or corporations to partner with us. But I don't know if focusing on the dollar sign itself is necessarily that valuable. I mean, I think we could say like total amount, but I, I wouldn't recommend doing individual amount for each, yeah.
Should we take this down?
Let's take it down then.
I think it's
No, it's okay. I'm just saying, I don't think
I agree.
For now, I just don't think having it like as kind of like a rolling ticker on our, you know, on our main page necessarily is the way to go. But, but this is just informational here. So, yeah, so a couple of things to highlight. So, so the first one, that's our, the 21st Century Learning Center grant. So, we just received kind of a bonus grant because the attendance for that program has been so high. So, this So, this, the 21st Century Learning Center grant is the, what we call the Roots Program over at Groton Middle School. So, we're actually in the last year of that five-year grant. So, that was a, we received $60,000 per year to run that program over at Groton Middle School. It's a, it was, it's a federal program that's, that's managed by the state. So, we are going to reapply this year and hopefully be awarded another six-year grant. And we're also going to apply for the high school too, to expand the program up to there. So, fingers crossed we get it again. And the fact that we have had such high attendance will help us in our application. But we were given this bonus grant of $13,000, which the, the program staff have decided, they had some different options of what they could apply it towards. And they decided they want to use it to expand our, work with our partners. So, we're talking with Ness and some of our community partners about having more consistent programming with them during that after-school program. So, I do think I would need the board, since it's over 10,000, for you to approve, accept that. And then we would need to go to the town about that too. So, the next one, the community Wi-Fi, we talked about last week, along with the Kendall, the Nature, and just now the Smart Start Grant. So, the other one that we received file notification on this past, early, actually, a week ago, we received the official notification, was for the, the COPS Hiring Program, which is a very competitive grant. The town applied for it on our behalf. And it will, it's a $250,000 grant. It's a five-year grant, and it will use the, should you choose to accept it, it'll be used to support adding two new school resource officers to the elementary level. Clearly, $250,000 is not going to pay for that full amount, like over four years. So, I guess let us know what information you need from us in order to make that decision.
We had discussed, so, rolling it out, kind of so that we could take, front-load it a little bit. And then we take on more responsibility as
They require that. The Department of Justice requires that you, you front-load it. So, you pay for more of the officer's salaries in the first year of the grant, and then it tapers down over the remaining years until, so that ultimately year two.
So, in other words, the grant takes the responsibility originally.
For the first year, yeah. And then it goes down to, so it pays for, I think, 80% of the position in year one, then down to six, or 60, and then 30, and then
And this is something I have discussed with the board and put in board notes, especially last year. If you can recall, there was this situation where threats were made against elementary schools. And Chief Osaro and I met with multiple PTOs and, and school groups of the schools affected. And there was some real concern, both on the Thames River and the Mystic River, on both sides of town. So, you know, that's what really prompted us to think about possibly having SROs to share some of the elementary schools. So, it'd be a shared responsibility.
Well, maybe you get back to us with the cost for the board.
Yep.
In all four years, is it four years? Yep, in all four years. What is it going to cost the board?
Yep.
Okay.
And then, yeah, we're still waiting on one grant from the state. Hopefully, we'll hear about that pretty soon. And working on another farm-to-school application with Ernie that's due in a couple of weeks. That would be for equipment and just continued support for his staff.
Is that the $50,000 now?
So, the farm-to-school one would be another $100,000, one to the USDA. Just something to be mindful of, under the, the list, grant-funded projects in progress, that all of the ones that say ARP in front of it, those are all ending this year. So, just to be mindful of that as you
Where are those? I'm looking for them. Where are they located?
So, in section four.
Okay.
There's one, two, three, four grants that were part of the American Rescue Plan.
Yep. And then our DODs.
Yep. Those are still ongoing, and hopefully, fingers crossed, that program will be up and running again next year.
And we did get some feedback from the math grant that I forwarded to you. So, that's helpful should we be able to resubmit it. We'll come to the board, share the idea again, and then figure out how we can make it even better. So, when they start accepting them, maybe it'll get accepted.
Absolutely. Do you have any questions from this list?
Yeah, so I do think these are wonderful. Maybe you don't want to put on the main website the dollar amounts. I have a different opinion on that, but if you don't want to do that, it'd be great to at least list them and have like their, just like this, their main goals and maybe like a highlight or a picture next to it. I think it's, you know, would be nice, nice to have and communicate kind of like at the center of excellence.
Totally agree. Yeah, that we want to keep going, our partnerships and
Yeah.
Yeah, collaborating.
So, you're the expert in this, so I defer to you on that. One thing that's more to use is that in the operational review that was just completed, one, one recommendation is that the school board see the, the budgets of these, these existing grants or any existing grants in the same way that we get regular updates. I'd like to the finance facilities committee, hard work for you guys. So, is that something that we're going to start doing this school year as part of like, to fulfill that recommendation or?
So, just out of curiosity, like, what level of detail do you think you would want with the budgets? Like, so, we normally, when we apply for competitive grants, we break them into like broad categories, personnel, supplies, equipment. Would you want it in those broad categories or like more detailed than that?
Just speaking for myself, that, that seems to be more, that level of information seems to be more information than is routinely given right now. But I, I'm on the committee, so I won't speak any further on that. I'm just, I'm just pointing out that this, it does intersect with one of the recommendations of the operational review.
We can work with Rita on that, to see Rita.
I think that is one of Adrian's, it's going to be on the CLW agenda on December 8th about grants. Ian?
Thank you, yeah. I definitely just want to express support for what Mike just asked about. Definitely, we should look at the operational view and take every opportunity we can to improve our, what we're doing on our end to match what's considered industry standard, more or less. And back to the grants, the SROs and the elementary schools. I definitely, if that's a program that, that law for safety and security, for sure. I'm just curious, you know, have we looked at what other districts are doing? Do they have SROs in elementary as well as, you know, a high school?
I don't know that. I could get more specificity, but in the meetings that I've had at Larn with superintendents, there are school districts, neighboring school districts that either have SROs, either full-time or part-time, or security guards. And sometimes you can get security guards that are retired police officers. But with this particular grant, it's the use of police officers. And Chief Osaro is saying that they are recruiting. And in the recruiting, a lot of people are coming to them saying, we understand you have a really good program for SROs. And that's like a selling feature. So, but it takes a while to get them trained, and it has to go out to bid. So, it usually would be some of the more senior police or the ones who have been there longer and been well-trained. So, it's all a process, Ian, just like everything else, you know?
Got it. All right, so, oh, yeah, so, how many districts do you have that are similar, but that you have like some security personnel in?
Yep, not all. I mean, I think it's catching on. I think more and more of us are feeling that there's a need for it.
Yeah, great.
Okay.
Jen?
So, thanks for sharing this. Now, I have more, more questions.
On the list, you check it twice.
The AR, the ARP ones that are going to be expiring at the end of June, those are some very key positions that we have. And so, we need to start considering how we're going to integrate if we choose to, right, into our operational budget. And so, when you submit your budget book, and if you want to continue forward, just make sure that those are included. I, I think it's roughly 700, just 800,000 roughly. So, that's a lot for us to absorb.
I just want to mention, though, that those were total amounts over, a lot of those grants were multi-year grants.
Oh, okay, good. That makes me feel better.
Probably more like a third of that.
Okay.
Some of it was supplies. Now, we've
That's true. A lot of it was curriculum.
Yeah.
Materials.
And where it was ELA, we might be looking for math this year. So, you know, the shift to, to get the next stage done.
I was just wondering if we had to, like, in our requests for information and stuff, do we have to do board consensus?
Oh, yes.
I just agree with everything that was asked.
Well, you don't have to read it all, but I get it. We almost ended out.
Adrian?
I just have a question about the DOD career pathway. How much money is left on that? Is that split up between four or five years, that, that amount?
So, the, the DOD career pathway is in its final year. So, that'll be done at the end of May.
All right.
So, what's remaining in that grant?
I don't know.
Eighty thousand maybe? I'm not sure.
I'm not sure. We'd have to talk to Val, but there are some expenditures that have come her way. One, Naviance is going to be shifting to class links. It's the one that DOD partners use, and it's much more comprehensive for middle school and high school. So, not that we would pull the rug from our seniors. They would still have Naviance for this year, but then we could get it started. So, that's an expense that we're looking at for the next three years being covered by this grant so that we don't have to think about that. And we won't be paying for Naviance. So, we've, we've been very strategic about ways that we can use some of the final funding so that it could be, really lift a little responsibility for us operationally. But it also goes along with career programs.
I'm wondering, because I saw it last week in the presentation when we were talking about the Manufacturing Center Career Pathways was listed as one of the funding sources for it. So, I'm just wondering if it, is it really going to be a funding source for
Yes, it does.
For manufacturing.
That and electric boat.
Well, but if there's only 80,000 left, and I'm just wondering, is it realistically going to be a large source of funding?
It's going to be for the, I don't necessarily know.
Is there money in DOD or a significant amount to help support that manufacturing center project?
I'm not even going to guess, but it's, she, last I talked to her, I knew about the class links, and I knew about some of the, the machining and tooling that we might need that could be covered by that.
Is it possible to get us that information?
I'll get a list.
Okay. Anything else, Adrian?
Not with this. And I'm going to stick on, on the topic.
Oh, wow.
I'm going to, on the agenda and I'll save my question for other things.
This is the last thing on the agenda.
I know.
Oh, okay.
And I'm trying to not talk.
And this is a big agenda.
Do you need to vote on the 21st century, accepting that? Do we bring it to the town? No?
We can't.
We can't vote in this meeting.
Next week.
Next week, next week. So are we all in consensus with all the information we wanted from the staff to bring back to the board? Are we all in consensus of that?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Ian?
Yes, thank you.
Andrew, you said yes and today's not on. Okay. All right, so we're all in consensus of that and thank you very much, Shannon, unless anybody has any more questions for Shannon.
Thank you, Shannon.
No.
Thank you, Shannon. And thank you for really getting us these grants.
Yeah. You do a wonderful job.
We do want to know a little bit more about the grants, but we're very thankful.
We have a lot of questions, but, but your position is very important.
Aw, thank you.
Yeah. It's worth its weight in gold, for sure.
It really is, so thank you.
Yep.
And she's always looking, but sometimes the turnaround time goes way too quick. I don't know how she pulls it off sometimes.
Yeah, I mean, it would have been great at that early childhood if we had a couple years notice on that.
Yeah, I know.
And unfortunately, on this agenda, there's no referral list, but it will be on the next agenda for December. And Joan, Jay left at 8:24 PM. So you can note that in your minutes, Joan.
With a frowny face.
Okay? With a frowny face, Mike says. All right. The next thing on the agenda, anything else? Nope, because it's not on the agenda.
It's not on the agenda.
Yeah, we got it ready.
David.
Dr. A. Your turn.
Motion to adjourn. Good night.
Good night, Gracie.
Motion to adjourn by Dr. A, seconded by Mike. All those in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye, aye.
Abstentions. Thank you, everyone.